She's in the room.
I can start with him?
You can start, she's in the chamber. Can you copy?
None, that's okay.
I got extra.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 5th, 2017. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Reyes. Counsel DePena.
Present.
Counsel Rodriguez. Counsel Abdu.
Present.
Counsel Ortiz.
Yes.
Oh, me, yes.
Counsel Maldonado.
Present.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please join me for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions. The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counselors, we have a few sets of minutes that need to be approved. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes from October 3rd, 2017, October 17th, 2017, and October 24th, 2017? Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second. Any discussion? Since there's no discussion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, um, any opposed? Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Reyes. Counsel DePena.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez. Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz.
Yes.
Counsel Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
Maldonado. Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Yes, motion carries.
Six.
Moving on, public participation. Please remember that you will have two and a half minutes to address the City Council. When speaking, please speak to the councilors as a whole and not to any individual councilors. When you hear the first bell, that means that you have two minutes. By the time you hear the second bell, your time is up. Please identify yourself with name and address for the record. First person is Mr. H. Mali.
Good evening, honorable members. The last meeting of the 2017, the important news of the $25 million new Lawrence Police Department encourages us as a citizen to demand of Mayor Rivera sign Lawrence Police Department contract. Our police department with the leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job with demand of you support our police department and their wonderful union, sign Lawrence Police Department contract. Our DPW are the best workers in the nation. We need to support our DPW and their union. In our city, the only union that has contract are teachers' union. Million thanks to the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh. Our public school are the best public school in the nation. It doesn't matter how far he leaves our city, how high he goes, we are grateful to his services. Last week, another person died in our city with a gunshot wound. Mayor Rivera must support our Lawrence Police Department with a budget of $12 million during the impossible job. Election 2017 showed us that our city is divided. We, the 7,600 that vote for Honorable William Lantigua, demand of Mayor Rivera support our police officers and their union. Mayor Rivera fired in discrimination for religion and nationality. Great man such as Kamal Bokar after 18 years working in the library. It is shameful. We encourage Kamal file a suit to get his job back. Remember your campaign promise. Save Lawrence, prosper Lawrence. Only possible if you support our police officers and their union and our hard-working DPW workers and our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street in the city. Trying some, trying to find something to rant about in council's last month of service is usually difficult, but the ordinance committee did a wonderful job of solving that problem. November 30th, they, in my humble opinion, totally botched the handling of item 307, Agenda Item 30817, in which the Historical Commission wishes to have the authority to name, prepare and name sites in city historical districts, also review and approve names in the historical districts. The LHC would be granted the authority of this said process and would be submitted to the City Council for final approval. The above-mentioned sentences are from an email from Jonas Stunzda to the three members of the Ordinance Committee and the City Council Secretary. As a quick aside, I often wonder why there are only three members of the Ordinance Committee. Some people count sheep that fall asleep. I count council committee members. I'm not overjoyed with what appears to be a process in which the Historical District Commission wa, is wanting to be the sole determining factor in naming historical sites in the city with no apparent input from the citizens. Does the fact that they are the determining factor in naming historical sites also include the naming and possible renaming and locating of monuments to veterans? The Historical District Commission appears to have been created on March 28th, 1989, and the four historical districts are defined in Appendix B of the city's municipal code. The particular boundaries of the North Carmen Historic District would bring into question as to one of the sitting councilors could vote on any issues, as they have property that falls into the described boundaries of the northern district. In closing, I wonder why the North Carmen Historical District was described the way it was as opposed to being described as the Campion Carmen Historical District. Possible solutions? Order a public hearing or send it upstairs to the city attorney's office as an early Christmas present. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next per, next person is Will Carpenter.
City Council President Vasquez and the members of the City Council. I am Will Carpenter, Vice President for the Chamber of Commerce here in the Lawrence area. We're headquartered right here on Essex Street, and I'm here pretty much on behalf of the nearly 300 businesses in Lawrence that are members of the Chamber of Commerce. We sent a letter, care of President Vasquez. Hopefully you all got a copy of it. I have copies here in my folder if you need it. We simply asked that you consider reducing the tax classification for commercial and industrial. Businesses in Lawrence are faced with many challenges. They have to keep their operations going. They have to meet payroll. They have to meet their mortgage or lease obligations. They have to meet the rising cost of energies. Another cost they encounter is, of course, the tax from the city. We consider this to be one of the controllable costs as opposed to those costs that really are not controllable, as I just mentioned, like lease, mortgage, and utilities. Therefore, on behalf of the 300 businesses in Lawrence that are members of the Mary Mac Valley Chamber, we ask that you consider at least not increasing and hopefully decreasing the tax classification rate for commercial and industrial. Bear in mind that these businesses help contribute to the quality of life here in the city. They employ thousands of City of Lawrence residents, residents who in turn benefit from the employment they receive from these businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am now submitting these names to the record. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Vice President.
Counsel President, I'd like to take Document Number 13314, Military Veteran Recognition Off Table Matters.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. Can we call up Ms. Murphy forward, please? Good evening, Ms. Murphy. Are we you? Thanks for being here. It's our pleasure to have you here today. I'm going to read this brief resolution, which only sums up very succinctly some of your great accomplishments and how special you are as an individual, and we're so glad that you're here tonight. It's a resolution by the Lawrence City Council to Mary Ann Murphy, in grateful recognition for her service during World War II as a member of the Royal Air Force, the RAF, and the Women's Auxiliary Air Force, or the WAAF. Mary Ann Murphy served in the rank of Leading Aircraft Woman from April 4th, 1942, to August 23rd, 1945, and celebrated her 100th year of her birth on November 19th, 1917. Mary Ann Murphy is the widow of World War II veteran Staff Sergeant John Edward Murphy, who served from May 27th, 1942, to February 10th, 1946. They met during World War II, the European Conflict, and married shortly thereafter. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence City Council, of the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, hereby honor Mary Ann Murphy for her years of honorable service to help further the cause of freedom and celebrate her 100th birthday by setting our hands and cause the seal of the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be fixed on this day, the 5th of December, 2017. It is signed by all members of the Lawrence City Council. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody here. I really appreciate being here and accepting this certificate. I haven't got much time to talk, but I just, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all. Thank you very much.
If it's okay, Counsel President, Jamie Melendez, Director of Veteran Services, I'd like to say a few words to this other presentation. I also want to acknowledge that there is quite a contingent of Mary's family here. I would like for them to, they're already standing up. If they, they are circling around here. There are, there are children, Mary's son.
Colin.
Colin is here. His wife is here. Their children are here. We have, how many generations?
Four.
Four here, yeah?
Three, great-grandchildren.
That is, three great-grandchildren, so it's a tremendous legacy as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, who has some other resolutions as well.
Thank you, Vice President. Again, Jamie Melendez, Director of Veteran Services for the City of Lawrence. Counsel President, I really appreciate this time. I think it's important that we highlight, Mary, you're an amazing woman. God bless. Thank you for all you've done for us. On behalf of Donna and myself, we put together a little photo of her and her late husband when they got married. Her in her uniform and them in Europe, so I just wanted to present this to you from us, personally from me and Donna. Thank you. Counsel President, again, I apologize for the time. I also have a few resolutions that I'd like to present to her. From the City of Congress, from the Office of Congresswoman Songus, June Black is here to present a resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President, members of the council. It's my honor to be here to join you in honoring this wonderful woman and a little belated happy birthday on her 100th birthday. And the Congresswoman's in Washington, but she wanted to make sure the occasion did not go without her sending, I have a note and a certificate, and the note says, "Dear Mary Ann, it is with my greatest pleasure that I write to wish you a most happy 100th belated birthday and to thank you for your courageous service in the Women's Auxiliary Air Force during World War II. Your brave service and that of your fellow service members has paved the way for a future generation of women to serve their country in the military." She was a really true pioneer, leading the way in the WAAF. Congratulations on this incredible milestone, and please feel free to contact me if ever I can assist you. And we have a Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition to Mary Ann Murphy in honor of her 100th birthday and in recognition of her courageous service during World War II in the Women's Auxiliary Air Force, serving as a teleprompter operator and achieving the rank of Leading Aircraft Woman. Congratulations on this milestone and best wishes for continued good health. Congresswoman Songus.
Thank you so much.
You're very, very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President, and the rest of the council for encouraging me. I also have just a quick, brief from the State House. Unfortunately, our state representatives could not be here, but they wanted to send you a certificate also. And it reads, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Mary Ann Murphy in recognition of your courageous service to the Allied Forces and the Royal Air Force as a Women Auxiliary Air Force service member during World War II. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Signed Frank A. Moran, State Representative, Diane DiZaglio, State Representative, and Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House. On this given day, 5th of December, 2017." And finally, the last one, again, my apologies. I did not mean to take so much time. From, from our honorable mayor, a proclamation. Be it known, I, Daniel Rivera, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, and on behalf of the residents of the City of Lawrence, by and through this proclamation, hereby celebrate and honor Mary Ann Murphy on the occasion of her 100th birthday and hereby state as follows. Whereas Mary Ann Murphy was born on November 19, 1917, and has been a resident of the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, whereas Mary Ann Murphy broke barriers and made history as a member of the Women's Auxiliary Air Force where she served in World War II, and whereas Mary Ann Murphy nobly served in the Royal Air Force and the Women's Auxiliary Air Force from April 9th, 1942 through August 23rd, 1945, and whereas Mary Ann Murphy served as Leading Aircraft Woman, LACW, and was a teleprompter operator, she has given her honorable service and dedication. Her bravery and personal sacrifice is a continuation of the values which uphold the universal hope of freedom and liberty for all. And whereas Mary Ann Murphy is celebrating a significant milestone as a centurion, we commend you for your honorable service and wish you a happy 100th birthday, filled with love, peace, and joy. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Daniel Rivera, on behalf of the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, honor and recognize Mary Ann Murphy for her honorable service. You are the essence of strength and inspiration. Thank you for making Lawrence better. Furthermore, I set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, this 5th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2017. Signed, Daniel Rivera, Mayor." Again, Counsel President, council members, thank you. Just, I really want to say thank you to all of you for your time. And for those in attendance, you are a witness to one of our national treasures. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. We're not done. There's one more individual that I wanted to recognize. What I would like to do right now is to ask Private Samuel Perez to please come forward. Private Perez, please come forward. And while we're waiting for Private Perez to come forward, I asked Mary Ann Murphy a real quick story before the meeting started. I go, were you in London when the, when the, when there was being bombed back in the, during World War II? And she was there. She saw the fire. She saw the airplanes come. She was right there. She's part of that living history. And to have someone right there that we've had a chance to meet now who saw that firsthand, it's quite, it's very touching to actually now know someone who actually saw what was going on in her home country of Great Britain at that time. So, so now, the transition. As you know, Counsel President, what we do on occasion is when we find out that someone is, has returned from boot camp and started to serve, or started their process of serving our country, we want to acknowledge them, say thank you for starting those first few steps, wish them good luck as they go forward to serve our country, much in the same way that we, we saw Mary Murphy serve earlier. And it is quite the juxtaposition, isn't it, to have right now behind me Private Samuel Perez, who just left Paris Island and the Marine Corps two days ago, a freshly minted United States Marine, who in a very short order will be serving our country wherever he is going to be located. I'm not sure, do you know where you're going to be sent for training? Not yet? His next train's North Carolina. So what we want to do in this time is we really want to wish him a Godspeed. We want to wish him all the best of luck. We want to thank him for be willing in the volunteer military to serve our country. He's not being drafted. He's doing this as a public service, as a military service. So we want to thank you and wish you the very best. What I would like to do is I would like to give you my pen from the City Council, from the City of Lawrence, that you cannot wear that, obviously, on your uniform, but when you put your civilian uniform on, if you wouldn't mind putting that on to remember us when you're serving, that'd be great. Good luck.
So, as he said, I just left the island, so I'm not the most articulate right now, but I just wanted to thank everybody for the warm welcome home, and I just wanted everybody to know that I'm proud to serve.
I also wanted to recognize Victor, his dad. Stand up, Victor, say a quick hello.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Now moving on with the agenda, we have public hearings. Document 24017, Parking, Canal Street, from Union Street to Mill Street, placed on the agenda by Joel Herrera. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 240, 2017. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, in council chambers at 200 Carmen Street, 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence to be amended by deleting the following paragraph from 1036010 of the municipal code concerning prohibited parking, deleting Canal Street north side from Union Street to Mill Side, Mill Street side, and inserting in its place instead the following paragraphs to the same section of the code in proper order. Canal Street, parking on both sides from Lawrence Street to Mill Street, not permitted. Canal Street, south side from Mill Street to Union Street. To the extent there exists any ordinances, contrary to repealed in that respect, only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. Counselors, in essence, this, this ordinance will allow full parking to be provided to Canal Street on the side of the courthouse, the INS courthouse, between Union and Mill Street.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
My motion to approve.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, I would like to hear from the councilors that participated in the discussion as an ordinance, if they could. Help the audience know what we're doing.
Yes, the businesses around, in that particular area are not able to park on the side of the Immigration Department. There's a street restriction, and obviously that is causing a problem for all the businesses that are in there. So the request is to allow parking space on the side of the canal. So that would not, is in that on?
No, it's actually the other side of the street, near the INS building. It prohibits parking between the hours of 3:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., but allows the business to utilize that area on the other side of the canal. Environmental laws prohibit parking on the side of the canal.
Yes. Oh, it prohibits it?
Yes.
So we wouldn't, so what we decided, the subcommittee is not, is not, is not allowed?
From what the notes I read, Counselor, it was requested on the east side of Canal Street. There is no east side. It was presumed that the council had intended that it be on the south side of Canal Street, being no parking prohibited for environmental reasons on, on the north side of Canal Street. In other words, you cannot park along the canal itself.
So you cannot park on the canal itself?
That's correct.
Okay. Again, as I recall, the recommendation was for that, so if it is not allowed...
That's not what the recommendation said. The recommendation was for the east side of Canal Street. There is no east side.
No, there is no east side.
Right.
No. Because it was intended to be on the canal side.
If you wish to amend it, you, you can.
Okay, on this...
For point of clarity.
This is what I would ask people.
So the, the original intent, as presented by Counsel Maldonado, is to allow parking space for businesses in the surrounding area. The clerk has explained to us, and based on the report that we have received, is that the, the recommendation by the subcommittee to place the sign or allow parking on the east side is not doable because there's not an east side. It's either a south or north side to Canal Street. As a result of that, the recommendation has come back to be on the side of the Immigration Building, because we are not allowed to provide parking space along the canal.
But I understand that the side of the Immigration Building is prohibited.
No, it is allowed, it, we can, it is our determination. We can determine that.
I thought that because it was a federal building, it was restricted.
We can determine it. We can determine that.
So, just Counsel President, we would have to then amend the proposed ordinance, because this here is talking about the north side, and even... because this here is talking about the north side, and even Officer Scanlon is saying that the only way that it would be possible to do the parking would be on the north side, because the width allows for it, but now I'm hearing that the north side is actually the side of the canal, and that for environmental reasons, there can't be any parking there.
The, the side of the canal would be the south side.
He said north.
If we take, if, the south side would be the side of the canal.
The north side would be the...
That's what he just said, the north side.
South side.
So we would have to amend it to be on the south.
Based on the information I've read, it's, the south side is the side of the canal.
Council President, are we certain that...
Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so then this is fine.
Are we certain that the, that the Immigration Department will not object to having parking on the side of the building?
We haven't, we have not received any, any other documentation that says otherwise.
May I suggest that we table this document so that we can check with the Immigration Department? Because I, my understanding is that they don't want any parking on, around their, because of danger...
Homeland security issues.
Yes, some, some, homeland security, so that may be a problem, so I suggest that we table the document that...
Is that a motion?
The City Clerk contacts the Immigration Department and see whether they will have any objection. If they don't have any, then at the next meeting, we can probably approve it.
Okay, is that, is that a motion?
Before he tables, before he tables, just for clarity, we're saying that the north side is the side where the Immigration Building is, and not the canal.
That's correct.
All right, so it could stand as, as is?
Yes.
If everything else goes well, okay.
Okay, so I made the motion that, that we communicate with the Immigration Department to determine whether there's any objection, parking on their side because of homeland security, and that we table this document until the next meeting.
Second.
Response.
Motion has been made. I'm properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 34017, residence ticket parking only, Front Street, placed on, on the agenda by Council Abdu. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 340 of 2017, notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 5th, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment by adding the following new paragraph to the permit parking designation Regarding permit parking for residents only on Front Street, both sides from the intersection of South Broadway to the intersection of Andover Street. To the extent there exists any ordinances, contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect. Only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Brenda Rosley, 127 Chester Street. This is a street that's in my area, and I've been on the Neighborhood Association since the start in 2009. They have had numerous problems on this street. It's a small, one-way street, goes from South Broadway into Andover. Residents are having a hard time parking, people park in front of their driveways, and I think resident sticker parking will, hopefully, will ease what the residents are going through. I, I have numerous emails, and Council Abdu can attest to all the emails that we get from the residents on the streets, so I'm hoping that this will pass. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Discussion, Council Abdu.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I'll be real quick. This is, this item, number 34017, is a result of several months of much conversation with the neighbors, there's been several public hearings, good work done at the Ordinance Committee meeting. We originally had an initial piece of legislation that was perfected, if you will, and this is the result of that. These folks have a very narrow road, very small road, and this is intended to rectify that. And they showed up at the Ordinance Committee several weeks ago, and the, the group has actually suffered, there's been a death, and there's been illness. So, I suggested after the public hearing that they didn't all need to show up this evening, but you should know, there, there is almost unanimous amongst the residents' support for this residence sticker parking, and I would ask everyone's support this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Discussion.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yeah, now that we're talking about the parking restrictions for residency, I know that we have a similar problem on Park Street.
Park, Park Street?
On Park Street, where all the landlords on Park Street requested residency parking because of all the problems they had with people that were parking there. There was a proposal, because the Union Street, Jackson Street building, be included in that residency parking law, and I don't know what's happened, if it's been, but my understanding was that it wasn't, it wasn't allowed. And I don't think, is, as much as I understand why you, you want it on Front Street, I don't believe that we should be telling other people no, and other people yes. I don't know what motivated the idea that it shouldn't go happen on Park Street, but that that lady would have been a lot, well, because her issue was her daughter being able to park in the dark, that now it has no, no parking restrictions, anybody can park there, no guarantee her daughter would be able to park there. So, I would like to hear from the President and this body, how is it different, how is this request different from that of the, the Park Street residents?
I encourage you to go back to all of the Ordinance Subcommittee meetings and read all of the minutes that have been presented to the council, all the information is there. It is residence ticket parking, so I encourage you to do your due diligence prior to the meetings and obtain the information from there. Thank you, Council Alvarez Rodriguez. Any further questions or comments?
Well, I'm not, I'm not done yet, and since I asked before, I'd like to repeat. Why shouldn't, now that we're discussing this, why are we not able to get the information right now? You tell me.
You have the information better to be available.
You know, I was gonna, no, I was gonna get the minutes, but I don't have them.
They have been emailed to you multiple times, all of the minutes. So, Counselors, we all have received information.
And I was told, and then I was later told that, that you were going to go back to it, and...
And I would like to inform you, if you have been attending all of our meetings, as you should, I understand that, but you should...
You know that I haven't, and, you know, it's...
Counselors, can I please get a motion to recess?
You wanna hear, you wanna hit below the belt? That's not what we're doing here.
So moved.
Okay, is, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Motion fails due to a lack of a second. Counselor, if you...
That's not what we're doing here. You know, I'm not hitting you below the belt, or hitting myself, you shouldn't be hitting me below the belt.
Counselor, that is exactly what you're trying to do. If you, I understand, I understand...
I'm asking you a question, and that's gonna, that's gonna affect, the decision that I make, I'm voting on this, on this...
And I am, I am providing you an answer, Counselor.
Okay, it's gonna affect.
Okay.
Because you can't, you can't just pick and choose who you want to allow to have certain things in this city.
I have provided an answer. If you review the commentation prior to meetings, you will notice that in the Ordinance Committee, if you had either attended and/or reviewed the agenda, you will notice that there's a document there that has been tabled, and no discussion has happened because you have not been present. Counselors that attend meetings could attest that that is the case. Counselors that reviewed the documents could attest that that is the case. So I will encourage you...
Okay.
I will encourage you to review the documentation prior to the meetings and do your due diligence. Counselors, any further questions or comments?
And, you know, the answer was so easy, the answer would have been, you know, there's discussion taking place on that very issue on the Ordinance Committee level, okay? You didn't have to go through all of that, about whether I was there or not there. You chose to make this, huh? You chose to make this a debate.
Any further questions or comments? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? Mr. Clerk, pro call, please.
Council Vice President Laplante.
Yes.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez. Council Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Ortiz.
Yes.
Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez noted. Councilor DePena.
Yes.
Council Reyes noted. Council President Vasquez.
Yes, the motion carries.
So.
Next document is document 34117, handicap parking, 105 Chester Street, to be deleted. Placed on the agenda by Council Abdu on behalf of Barbara Evans. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 341, 2017, notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in Council Chambers. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a revised ordinance to be deleted from the handicap parking ordinance section. Chester Street north side, from a point 20 feet east of Clifton Street to a point 40 feet east of Clifton Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on November 22nd, excuse me.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 35317, fiscal year 2018, property tax classification hearing, placed on the agenda by the Lawrence Board of Assessors. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 353, 2017, notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, in Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed approval of a split tax rate, shifting the tax burden between residential open space properties and commercial, industrial, and personal property classes for fiscal year 2018, in order to establish the residential and commercial tax rates for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts. Interested taxpayers were encouraged to present information by appearing at the public hearing this evening or providing written comments or information to be submitted on the matter. Comments could be forwarded to the officer, the city clerk, as stated in the advertisement, no later than 4:30 p.m. today's date. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. The item was published in the Rumbow Newspaper on November 22nd, and the Eagle Tribune on November 27th.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion.
Council Vice President.
The Budge and Finance Committee did discuss this and sent up to the council a favorable recommendation to set the tax factor at a factor of 1.75, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Council Maldonado.
We have been presented with a fact, the, the smaller factor of 1.75, but there is something below that.
No.
Can we, can somebody from the Assessment Office tell us why?
So let me, so 1.75 is the highest factor, not the lowest factor, just as a, as a point of clarity.
Okay.
Yeah, so you might want to say that.
Okay, is that the highest that it can go?
175 is the highest allowed.
It's the highest allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Thank you, Council President. Hi, can you explain why 175 is the highest that we can go?
I can do the presentation if you like, or I can just explain it to you.
You want to do a presentation, you said?
The council.
Go ahead, I mean, did you, Council President, is that something that you, that you want?
If the council has, if the City Council has reviewed the presentation or not, whatever is more convenient for everyone. I think that the presentation is able to answer all the questions.
Do you want a presentation? Okay, would take it.
Ms. Al, will you able to, will you be able to answer that question specifically to Council Alvarez Rodriguez?
Sure, I will answer for the, the question for you, Counselors.
By statute.
Right, it is by statute. That, that's the most, for the residential, we remember we're on a split rate, so we have the rate for the commercial, industrial, commercial property, and then we have the residential rate. So the most that we could go is 175 by law, so that would be the lowest tax rate for the residential taxpayer.
So the outcome would be the lowest tax rate possible at this time?
That would be the lowest possible tax rate for the residential, correct.
Since I have you here, what, what, what of the, is there anything that can be done at all about, you know, the single-family homes? We're getting killed with, with the fact that...
Well, if you look back in the last three years, the single-family homes have increased steadily, and it's the real estate market that determines the value of the property. So, once the real estate market starts to become much stronger, and people are selling homes a lot quicker, it's gonna affect the value of your home. And, and you've remembered now, we, when we base our values, we're basing them on a full calendar year from 2016 sales, from January 1st to December 31st. So we have to take all those sales, we have to analyze them, we qualify them for sales, we break them down by single families, two families, threes, apartment complexes, and condos. Once all those values have been formulated, we present that to the Department of Revenue. They will review all those values and certify them for us. So we cannot do anything until the Department of Revenue certifies all the values for the city.
Okay, so what is, so that you are paying attention to the fact that the one single-family homes are getting hit?
Oh, absolutely. That's critical. We, we have to pay close attention to it. We have to obviously pay attention to everything, but we have to really focus, you know, we're looking at an average, an average single-family home, which increased over 10% from last year to this year.
I hope in, in the future, this council can work together with you guys to make certain, we can do something about that.
Absolutely.
It is, we are getting worried. And then the statute you said was...
I'm sorry?
I don't have the statute, but I know the maximum is 1.75 by law, that's as high as the city can shift, for everybody statewide.
State law.
And then what happens to the businesses with this rate? How does it affect?
If you, if you look at the presentation that we provided to all council, it's a breakdown of each of the factor, what a 175 would mean for the residential, and what a 175 factor would mean for the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Let's tell you what it is.
So we're still protecting the residents?
I'm sorry?
We're still protecting the residents, or making it possible for them?
Yeah, because you're still gonna collect the same amount of taxes at the end of the day, whether your factor is 173, 174, 175, there's a set dollar amount of taxes that we will collect, and at the end of the day, we do collect that amount.
Okay, for benefit of the, of our constituents, I'd just like to repeat that the, the amount that is to be levy has already been set, right? That happened during budget time, am I correct?
Correct.
That although there was technically no increase in the rate, in the tax rate, well, not the tax rate, but the, the taxes to be levy, the dollars to be levy...
Right, it's still the same.
People will still see an increase because of the growth.
Well, we are, all our numbers are, yeah, are based on an average, so some people, their bill could be a little bit less, some people could be a little bit... bill could be a little bit less, some people could be a little bit more, so everything is, is based on an average, so it's not like we're focusing on a, on a single tax bill.
And I want to reiterate for all who are listening in the council, our constituents, that they are free to come to your office, right, to the assessor's office, if they believe that their property, it does not, was assessed improperly.
We'll be happy to discuss them with whatever, absolutely.
They can come and see you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll be happy to help them.
I want to make sure.
Yeah, no, we're available email if you want to come in, you don't need an appointment. It's very informal. Anytime you want to come into our office, there's always someone available to talk to you and discuss the values.
Did you want to say something? Yeah, and I just want to say, once they get this result approved, we'll send the tax bill and they have 30 days to, to apply for an abatement for by law.
For an abatement?
Yes, if they think their, their property has been over-assessed.
Right, I just want to thank you. I sent an elderly person over to your office for assistance, and, and you guys were great, and you helped her, and, you know, she certainly deserves it. She's lived 80 years here in Lawrence.
Right.
And, and used the support.
The elderly are always, you know, it, we do have exemptions for them, it's available to them, they can call us, they can come in, when we can go over the guidelines for them, sorry, excuse me, we usually start in October. Sometimes they forget to come in and file, and then when they get their bill, they realize, oh, I forgot to go in and file my exemption. They still have the opportunity to come in, so even if they get their tax bill and they have forgotten to file their elderly exemption, they can come in, and we'll give them a certificate, and they can have that deducted from their tax bill, so.
So there's the abatement?
There's the abatement, there's the exemption for the elderly.
And then there is the opportunity to work?
Yeah, there's a work off program for the senior citizens also, so there's a lot out there.
Those who have a lot of energy left.
So we, you know, everything helps, so I mean, like I said, we're, it's very informal in our office, anytime anyone wants to come in, we're more than happy to help them.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Alvarez Rodriguez. Counselors, any further questions? Council Maldonado?
Can you tell me again how the factors are set and who sets them?
Those are mandated by the Department of Revenue. The other one, it's all statute, I mean, I don't have the actual statute, I can get it for you, but that's why we tried to break down with the various factors, what it would mean for the residential class, the commercial, industrial class, that way to guide you.
Is the tax factor the same for all cities, or this particular set of factors are only for our city?
No, just for our city.
I'm sorry?
They all base a 175, 174, 173, but each community has a different levy, so depending on what your levy is, it's, just because Lowell has a 175 and we have a 175 doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be the exact tax rate, because they're working with a different budget, we're working on a different budget.
And a lot of the communities, they also have a single tax rate.
There's, out of the 351 communities in the Commonwealth, there's 110 that have a split rate, oh, sorry, a single rate, so that the residential and the commercial were paying the same rate. And I believe in Lawrence, if we had a single rate, it would be like $17.36, something like that.
Seventy-one.
So it would be close to $18 if we were to go with a single tax rate.
No more questions.
Good question.
Counselors, any further questions? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, we greatly appreciate your help.
I would need, Council President, please, if I could trouble you with signing the LA file.
Ms. Dow, can you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry, if I could please trouble Council President, we need the signatures of all the counselors on the LA file for the Department of Revenue, if you would be kind enough, please to sign it.
Yep, please bring it around. Just in the meantime, we're going to keep going.
Just make sure there's space for everybody.
Commendations from Mayor, city officials, and the city attorney. There's none appropriation orders and resolutions. We have an appropriation.
There we go.
Document 39517 is a storm emergency petition for approval of expenditures pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, request to consider, to be considered as an emergency measure, placed on the agenda by our DPW Director, Carlos Hakes. Good evening, Director.
Should be inside here, guys. It's inside here. I don't know what that is.
Counselors, in order to be able to engage in a discussion for this particular document, can I please get a motion to suspend the rules and declare this item as an emergency for discussion purposes only? There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
And it's been properly seconded. Good evening, Director Hakes.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, Counselors, thank you. As you're aware, the city of Lawrence and along the, with the Merrimack Valley experienced a devastating storm event on the night of October 30th, on to October, on the night of October 29th until the day of October 30th, which was a Monday, the city, particularly the Prime Republic Works, spent a good chunk of the next three weeks performing tree removal and cleanup of various types of debris that were left throughout the city as a result of the damage from the storm. The city was also obligated to contract with an outside tree contractor to assist in this process, since a lot of the tree removals that needed to be undertaken during this time were above and beyond the capabilities of the department. Hence, the department is obligated to incur certain liabilities in association with the removal of these trees. Thankfully, the vast majority of these trees have already been removed from the roadway, everything has been made safe. There are some miscellaneous cleanup areas that we still have to complete, some sidewalk repairs, some stump removals that we have to do, some miscellaneous areas. However, we seek authorization from the City Council to, we were incurred additional liabilities above and beyond what we have in our appropriation in the line item in the budget. We expect that the invoice from the various contractors that we contracted for this event and other repairs that are still pending are going to go above and beyond the appropriations that we have in our line item in the budget to address the situation. So therefore, we request authorization from the City Council to incur liabilities and be able to pay the invoices above and beyond what we have in a line item in the budget.
Director, what is the specific amount for the expense?
We do not have that number at this point in time, because this particular, there's invoices that still have not come in, and there are projects that still haven't been undertaken. I'll give you an example, the Ames Street Fire Station had some storm damage where there was some railing that was removed, there were some damages done to sections of the fire station that at this moment it's safe, but as a cost of that storm damage event, there are still some repairs that need to be done. So we haven't scoped out that project as of yet, we do not know how much that repair will be, so I do not have an exact dollar figure to give you at this point in time.
Do we have an estimate?
I can tell you that in regards to the tree damage, we could be looking at an invoice anywhere between $20,000 to $80,000, that's just in tree invoices. Mind you, that we still have to do sidewalk repairs that were done in a lot of different areas, there were some roof damages that were done to certain schools as well throughout the city, and then as well as the Ames Street Fire Station. So those projects in specific haven't been scoped out, so for those specific projects, we do not have a number. We expect that through our insurance carrier, we may be able to submit those as a claim through the damage, but the city will still be on the hook for about $100,000 deductible, depending on the size and the scope of the specific repair projects to the buildings.
Counselors, are there any questions or comments? Councilor LaPlante, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes.
I'm just wondering why we're not using free cash right now, why we have to go through an authorization, emergency authorization?
If I could just explain, Counselor, Chapter 41, 44, Section 31, it just requires us to declare an emergency, and he can overspend his accounts, once he knows what those numbers are, by declaring an emergency and also getting the Bureau of Accounts Director, the Bureau of Accounts, Director of the Bureau of Accounts approval to deficit spend his accounts. Then we could pay all the bills, figure out what the deficit is, and then either come back and, and take it out of free cash at a later vote when we have a final tally, or we can just put it on next year's tax recap, it's the city's option.
What's our free cash balance?
I'm going through free cash, I'm sure.
We'll be talking about this later.
Free cash balance before tonight's vote is, wait one second. Is, oops, $14,159, and there is, has been three items in front of the council agenda, a couple items tonight.
Thank you, Council President.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez?
Thank you, Council President. Hi, how are you, Mr. Juarez?
Good, Counsel, how are you?
Jacket?
Yes, Hakes.
Got it, okay. I just want to make sure, have we exhausted all of our resources, say like federal and state, or FEMA and MIMA respectively?
So as, as the initial round of, of storm managers began to collect information that came through my department, it was an overtime cost, equipment materials and whatnot that were expended, we worked with the police chief and the fire chief as well to submit a preliminary determination to MIMA. What it is, is they take the aggregate numbers from the communities in the area, and they look at whether the total dollar value and damages to the communities exceeds, exceeds a certain threshold that's required for an emergency declaration. If that is exceeded, then there may be some potential for some FEMA, MIMA reimbursements. At this point, we have not heard from those agencies of whether or not that declaration is forthcoming.
But it's your, is your perspective that we have gone beyond, that we have the expected expenditures facing us that we can get assistance from MIMA and FEMA?
Yes, certain, certain of those items may be reimbursable, so if that opportunity comes as a grant, or as a federal reimbursable grant program, we'll certainly be, make sure to apply for that reimbursement.
Right, I mean, both of these agencies were fantastic when it came to the issue of the Arlington District, I don't know, people might remember here, the huge flood that took place, and the Red Cross came over, but they were great at providing not only assistance to the city, but also to individuals who suffered great loss on their properties,
yes, and that.
And then rebuild.
There are different steps, there are different types of grants that do become available in these type of disasters. Some of them are available specifically to residents or homeowners to apply for the property, some of them are only applicable to political subdivisions or cities or towns, so depending on the type of declaration that comes down, there may be different pots of money available for different, for their homeowners or the cities and towns to apply for.
Right, so the matter here is that you're requesting dollars for the city's property, or are you also taking into account the loss of people's properties, the loss of people's properties?
At this moment, we're only taking into account damages to public property, the roadways, the sidewalks, and the city buildings as well.
Okay, so, but there would be, I guess, some assistance and then a way of announcing so that people know that there are certain assistance, there is certain assistance.
Certainly, if those assistance, if that assistance does become available, I'm sure that, either through the mayor's office or the Office of Community Development, that information will become available for the residents and the homeowners to apply for those grant programs.
Right, because I would think that you would want to add that to your number, just to make sure we hit that, that number that makes them available to help us.
Right, it is, obviously, it is beneficial, the higher the damage amount, the more likely you are to get federal grant money back.
Right.
At this point, I don't have the numbers on specific homeowners, on what type of damage were incurred by the homeowners.
Right.
I don't know if that information is being collected through to some other city agency. I can tell you that my department has been collecting any public damages that were done to public infrastructure.
Okay, could I speak to our Budget and Finance Director, is he? My, I just, a question, without a specific dollar amount, I would take it that I don't want to approve anything, any emergency fund, but I would like to keep it here, and as soon as you, you have that amount available, then great, we'll, we'll, we'll vote on it. I mean, what's your take on voting on this specific piece right now without the dollar amount?
Well, all you're doing is declaring an emergency, the Bureau of Accounts Director will, authorizing, you're declaring an emergency which authorizes Carlos to overspend his account or use any accounts that the city has to pay all these, incur all these expenses, pay these bills. Bureau of Accounts Director then has to be, also, we have, we have to write and get her approval tomorrow if we get the vote tonight, tomorrow we'll ask for Bureau of Accounts Director to also allow us to deficit spend or take funds out of any available account to pay for all these emergency measures. Once that's done, we can tally up what the amount is, and we fully expect to come back to the council with a free cash transfer, or, or the statute requires, or if we don't do that, then we have to, we're basically putting it on next year's tax bill, so we start next year with, in a deficit, if we don't come back and use free cash. So we have every expectation to come back in free cash in a, a month or two after the storm cleanup costs are incurred, and come for a free cash transfer, wipe that deficit out.
Well, I most certainly would like to be able to vote on it as an emergency, in hopes that that could, you know, help you with accessing other funds and other, re-stapping into other resources as well. And you're saying that whatever transfers are made will be coming before the council in 2018?
Right, just like, just like every year, we come back with snow and ice deficits, it's kind of, the kind of a similar thing, it's just snow and ice is so repetitive that we don't have to use this 44, Section 31, there's a, we don't need a council vote anymore, we can just deficit spend the snow and ice, it's a little, a little easier, but at the end of the year, we always come back, even though we're allowed to push that deficit into the next tax year, I always like to come down, use free cash, and start the following year clean. So every year since I've been here, we've wiped out any deficit we had before the end of the year, just so we're, we know exactly where we're at.
So if we vote in favor of this, he's allowed to spend beyond his current budget, is what you're saying?
Yes.
But before he does that, it will be coming before the council?
Well, he'll.
Before he spends the money?
Well, we'll pay all the bills associated with this cleanup, and then we'll tally up what those amounts are, and then we'll come back to the City Council and ask that the deficit that he's incurred be wiped out, make a transfer of free cash to one of his accounts to wipe that deficit and make it zero. And he could, and he would then have a detailed list of what he has expended, how much it was, exactly what incurred, what he incurred for that storm, similar to what he does for snow removal annually.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Council Ortiz?
Thank you. Good evening, Director Hakes.
Good evening, Counselor.
So I would like to go back to the part in the conversation where Counselor Noc Alvarez Rodriguez speaks about the declaration of MIMA and FEMA, and you mentioned that those declarations have not been made because there are certain thresholds that we need to meet, is that correct?
Yes, and if I may interrupt, they're not, they don't look specifically just at the city of Lawrence, they look at an aggregate value of where exactly, county by county, where those damages were taken.
Okay.
So when the state and the federal government does look at these disaster declarations, usually they're declared either on a state or a county level, so they look at the aggregate values that are expended on a specific county level, look at those values, and then they make a determination of whether or not it meets those thresholds.
And so what do we use to measure this storm as an emergency storm in, in light of the fact of it being a bad storm, an okay storm? What is it that we're using to declare this as an emergency?
The declaration of.
Basically, do we have a rubric for this?
Essentially, what it comes down for this particular event is that the amount of damages and cleanup costs that the department had to incur were, was above and beyond that we had on our regular operating budget. Should we had enough funds to cover all this, and I would not be here at this moment in time, to, to ask for the authorization to deficit spend. This particular storm was of such a destructive nature that the cleanup costs that were associated with this was above and beyond what we normally expect on the course of a regular year. So that's, on the, in the statute's eyes, this is, well, they classified it as an emergency because we didn't have enough money to cover under our operate, under our regular operating line item. So because we have the deficit spend, then they classify us as an emergency to be able to spend, pay for the invoices, and incur the, and pay for the liabilities that we've already incurred.
And this statute only covers public, it doesn't account for the, the damages made to private?
No, it does not.
Is there anything that we would use that would account for that? So, because you're talking about the aggregate value, that's what MIMA uses, does MIMA use only public expense and pri, or, or public and private?
I do know that they keep track of certain damages. I do know that they keep track of certain damages that are associated with private homes. Typically, like I said, I don't know if there is another city agency that's being tasked with track those, with those specific damages. Sometimes the homeowners like to go through either homeowner's insurance or whatnot to go through any damage claims. I don't know for the private properties, what does MEMA specifically look for to look at those thresholds? I know when it comes to public damages, they looked at both the real costs associated with the storm, cleanups, operating expenses, overtime costs, personnel costs, et cetera. But they also looked at lost economic productivity during the storm event. So if a storm would be able to damage and close out an entire section of the roadway for a week of a time, they look at the economic costs associated with the road closure at that point in time. So there are certain formulas that are also looked at that point in time. The, the initial declaration or the initial assessment that MEMA is doing is to see if in fact meets those thresholds. Above and beyond that, I'm not sure what other considerations MEMA is giving to private residents in terms of their damages. We can certainly follow up with our counterparts at MEMA and figure out where that is in the process and see if they believe that there's any future assistance coming from the federal government or the state government for this particular event.
So in turn, if we would have budgeted more money, we would not be having this conversation?
Essentially, yes.
So we don't have a, necessarily, a protocol like MEMA and FEMA does? But is MEMA and FEMA also motivated by money as well? Meaning, if they're looking at the aggregate value, so you're talking about loss of time, loss of accessibility, all of those things wind up being money, correct?
Yes.
So we are not incorrect in the direction that we're going and looking at this emergency in this format?
That is correct, yes.
It's just not as layered as a federal or a state agency?
Yes, they have very specific guidelines that they follow when they're looking at these assessments, population wise, area wise, and the different factors that look into a formula. Cost probably being the biggest factor in it, but it's not the only deciding factor on these events.
And so for the moment, just to be clear, the city is not offering any assistance or hasn't offered any additional assistance to families that were affected?
As far as, as far as I am aware, we have not, yes.
As far as you know. And then lastly, for the spending, so you're able to pay the bills over and above, but who's controlling aside, who's overseeing how you're spending?
The how, well, the authorization of the council, if they will be able to vote on it, will authorize essentially to be able to deficit spend in specific accounts. So at that point, I would obviously confer with Budget Finance Director Ionello to track the expenses as they're coming along at this point in time. Right now, we expect those funds to be specifically done for cleanups, for the storm event, particularly how it comes to sidewalk repairs and some missing lanes, streets and stumps that were left in certain areas.
On Ferry Street?
On Ferry Street, being one of them.
Ferry Street?
Eighty Ferry Street being one of them and a couple of the locations that we have in the city. So obviously, we've already had the contracting board that came in, did all the cleanup. We haven't got any invoices from them, but we do expect them to come any day now. So we want to be able to have the authorization from the city council. The one those invoices come in, we want to be able to pay them.
Is there a bid process happening with this work?
Excuse me?
Is there a bid process happening with the work?
We already have a contractor onboard that we had bid separately in the past for these specific type of events. So the contractor went through the entire procurement process a few months ago.
And what's the name of the contractor?
Pathfinder Tree Services.
Say this again?
Pathfinder Tree Services.
And so that contractor is doing all of the cleanup or some of, that's the only subcontract that we have?
It was, it was a mixed bag between city forces and the contractor. Whenever we couldn't handle a tree because of the size or the location of the tree, then we called in the contractor to assist, since they have larger and more specialized equipment to be able to handle those, those type of events.
And will we be dealing with any future new contractors for any additional work that still is looming?
At this point, we do not anticipate that.
So this is the specific contractor?
For the tree work, yes.
For the tree work, and you said sidewalk?
Yes, some sidewalk repairs where those, some of those trees were uprooted that were within the sidewalk, we would have to do some sidewalk repairs in those areas. That would be a different contractor that we've already procured as well.
And how did we procure that contractor?
Through the chapter 30, 39 N procurement process.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor to approve the emergency measure, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Counselor.
Given the motion that was made, so the motion was to suspend the rules. For the item, we have to approve the item? Counselors, is there a motion to approve this document?
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? And there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Moving on with the agenda, document 3817 is an appropriation transfer. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee, Vice President LaPlante.
The Budget and Finance Committee made a vote in favor of this document, 3817, which is an appropriation transfer for more staffing, the temp health nurses services. This is coming from the salary for the health nurses account to professional services and the amount is $6,616.80.
Is there a motion?
In the form of a motion.
Motion has been made?
Second.
It's been properly second, any discussion?
Question?
Discussion, Counselor Maldonado?
Can the Vice President explain the reason why the money is needed?
Yeah, I would really hope that we had somebody from that department here. Is there anybody from that department here? If not, I will try to explain it. They should have, Mr. President, someone from that department here to help explain the requests that they're putting forward. I'd be happy to explain it, but it should be the role that department...
And I can probably explain it on behalf of the Inspector Services Director. The issue was, we hired a nurse, the health, public health nurse, under a contract. They kept the public health nurse a couple of weeks extra and for some necessary purposes. So it went into this July, so he's asking for a transfer, the position's still vacant, a $6,000 transfer from his salaries to his professional services so he could pay that temp agency the balance due them for the public health nurse.
Okay.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 383, 8317, Mr. Vice President.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted in favor of setting this document up to the full council with favorable recommendation, that is to pay for unpaid prior years fiscal bills in the city attorney's office for the sum of $2,069.25 to Michael Ryan and $918 to Michael W. Stutz Esquire. Make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question?
Counselor Maldonado?
What were this gentleman arbitrating?
Let me ask Mr. Ball to come up, please.
Good evening, Counselors, Charles Ball from the city attorney's office, what was the question?
What were they arbitrating?
Why were they what?
What? What were they arbitrating?
What were they arbitrating? I, off the top of my head, I don't know. We get a lot, many arbitration bills in. As I explained to the subcommittee, these particular bills were filed with us timely. However, a prerequisite for our ability to legally pay the bills is that the arbitrators need to complete state conflict of interest training. One of them has since done so and we'd like to pay that. Another one has not done it, but we expect that he will do it and so we'd like to be able to pay that. The specific arbitrations for each of these, I can't tell you off the top of my head. I can certainly have somebody from my office, I won't be in tomorrow, but I can have somebody from my office send it down.
Ask the city attorney, are you supposed to be informed of any arbitration that is going on?
Yes, and I typically am informed. These particular ones are, you know, from last year and I don't recall specifically what the, what the matters were, but you can be assured that it was some labor grievance that was submitted to arbitration as to, or as in accordance with the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement.
I would like to get some information in regard to what specifically these individuals were arbitrating.
Okay.
I suspect that it may be the, the union of the employees from the inspection service. I suspect that that's what it is, but I would like to know.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez?
Thank you, Council President, through you. Hello Attorney Ball, how are you?
Oh, good evening, Counselor.
Evening. Could you tell me, are we the only ones to pay for the arbitrator or does the other party?
Typically, the arbitrator's services are divided equally between the city and the union. The one that's for $918, I would suggest to you, although I haven't seen the bill recently, but I would suggest to you, an amount that small signifies to me that the matter was resolved prior to the arbitration. The arbitration was canceled and as a result of the cancellation and the deadline, after the deadline for cancellation had passed and so each of us had to pay $918.20. That would be half paid by the city and half by the union, but that's...
But $918 is our half?
Yes, that's our half, yeah. Yeah, that's not the full bill. The $2,069.25 would also be our half, but it would be after, you know, a day or two of arbitration. Perhaps some middle of post arbitration briefs and the, and the review and the, and the creation of the decision, the writing of the decision, which is typically a multi-page document.
Well, it's pretty expensive. All right, because just by seeing that one and we're paying half, $918, for an arbitration that didn't take place, then...
But that's the way it's done, unfortunately.
That's the way it's done.
Sometimes the union...
So even if, was it like late cancellation or...
They give you a window, each arbitrator is different. They give you a window in which you can cancel without having to pay the fee. Many times, what I've seen recently is the union withdraws the grievance. In other words, the union has the grievance in, at the last minute, they withdraw it and as a result of withdrawing it, it's beyond the cancellation date. Sometimes if it's withdrawn, we'll tell the union they have to pay for it in full.
Okay, so when something happens like that on an account, not because you guys are debating, but because one party didn't act on time, is that what you're saying? Then you would tell them you're responsible for the arbitrator, period, for the entire amount?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't, I didn't know much about that, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Counselors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you. Counselors, we have document 38417 for which executive session is anticipated. So I was wondering...
If I, if I, if I may interrupt, Counsel President, I'm not sure that an executive session is necessary on this matter. I would, I would hope that it isn't. It's a matter that was before the subcommittee and we also asked that executive session be indicated in the, in the event that it's needed.
Yes.
Frankly, we're speaking, and we did speak at the subcommittee level in very broad terms, not about any particular cases and in that, on that basis, I would suggest that it might be appropriate to go ahead and determine after the fact based on questioning whether an executive session is necessary.
Definitely, I appreciate the comments, but I would like to ask my colleagues here in the body whether or not you believe that we will go into executive session if the council deems necessary? And, and we need to discuss more in detail. I think that it is up to the council not to determine. If that's the case and the council feels that way, I will ask that we take one document out of order.
Yes, please.
So we can be able to get the chief of the police out, because I think it will take less. But if the council doesn't think it will be necessary to go into executive session, I'll just follow the order of the agenda, so...
Well, Counsel President, I definitely would like to know some details of what we are using $750,000 for. I don't know whether the city attorney can provide us with that information without going into too much detail.
Okay, so with that said, let's go, let's, let's take document 39317 out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Chair, document 39317.
Thank you, Counsel President. The Budget and Finance Committee made a vote on this document to set it up with a favorable recommendation, that is an appropriation transfer for the sum of $250,000 from free cash to the department's FY 2018 budget. And to make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Okay, second.
Second for discussion?
Discussion, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, by the way, Counsel President, I'm gonna remand my advice. We made a motion to transfer $200,000.
$200,000.
Not 250, so that's...
It's 200 rather than 250.
200,000, not 250.
That was changed, okay. So my question, thank you, Council President, for allowing me the floor. The, why is this needed? Is this for overtime? Hi.
Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Nice to see you, Chief.
Nice to see you.
Could you tell me a little bit about why you need an additional $200,000?
The original request, and I would beg the council to reconsider of the dollar amount of $250,000 is earmarked for impact patrols throughout the city in our high crime areas in conjunction with some of the investigations that we've done and things related to the increase in crime related to the opiate crisis.
So you're saying with the rise of crime, you have doubled up on the areas?
Yes.
Most dangerous or high crime areas?
Correct, we've identified some areas that are that are prone to violent crime. We've spent roughly $162,000 in overtime dollars patrolling those areas and trying to decrease the, the violent crime.
Okay, so what have been the results? Have you seen results based on doubling up in...
Yes, we've, while it's not publicized, we do have a significant...
But they'll give you the details, but I'd like to know percentages or numbers.
Yes, I mean, we've, we've seen a decrease, we've made many arrests. The, some of the complaints in and around certain areas in the city have resulted in arrests of persons carrying firearms over this year. This calendar year, we've arrested 42 people with firearms illegally, carrying firearms. And, and that, a lot of that has to do with us interacting with the community in, in different areas, different neighborhood groups. We've been able to, to try to curb these, these, while these things don't, you know, grab the headlines, we've seen a significant decrease in our street level robberies roughly in the area, over 20%. As high as 25% decrease. That was a crime category a few years ago that was concerning to us.
Is that robbery, burglary?
Yes, street level armed robberies. Those have decreased significantly this year in the area between 20 and 25%. While, again, some of the violent crimes, some of the headline grabbing issues still challenge us, these dollars would be put towards continuing those patrols and making sure that the city is safe.
So is that full-time work or is it overtime?
It's overtime dollars.
It's overtime.
Correct, these, these patrols are run Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Again, during the summer months, you know, these, these particular patrols concentrate on areas, not, not just the violent crime, but also some quality of life issues that we face in the summertime with the loud music and loud noise and the parties. And what we've been, been able to accomplish with that is we haven't, we haven't seen any violent crimes, with the exception of one on Bailey Street, we haven't seen any violent crimes related to after-hours parties and, and the clubs. Those are, those are two areas.
To hear that.
Correct.
We've had enough losses, okay, so the, you were able to go down from 250 to 200?
Again...
Where was the...
The, the subcommittee, I think, examined our, some of the documents we provided. One of which was, excuse me, one of which was the, our, our current budget and the, the state of that budget. I would ask the council to reconsider... I would ask the council to reconsider going from 200 to 250. Some of the, some of the dollars that were identified in those accounts are things that, again, we're only roughly halfway through the fiscal year. Some of those dollars are an expectation of retirements. One, one particular category was our severance, which is a $100,000 line item. That was identified as being, we had not tapped into that at this point.
Okay.
But, you know, with the expectation of a retirement and some, some resignations, we're looking at about, between 60 and 80,000 dollars of that being taken away. And that's, again, we're, we're halfway through the budget year.
The people were resigning, you said?
I'm sorry?
Resignations? You're talking about...
Yeah, some, some people have chose to transfer.
Okay.
And we are looking at two, one retirement and another one that's potential, looking as a engine in the line of duty retirement that probably go forward.
So the 250,000 are entirely for hitting high-crime areas, but also...
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I should, I should...
People who are leaving?
No, no, I'm sorry. I should explain more clearly that the subcommittee identified, the reason that the, the dollar amount went from 250 to 200, the subcommittee, again, reviewed our current budget and identified some, some potential savings or some potential mitigation of our request for $250,000. Again, as I was explaining, the, those dollars, while we're only halfway through the year, have not been tapped into, but, but my, my guess is that, again, this is, my projection would be that those monies would be earmarked for retirements. So the savings amount that, that was identified, I think, I, I would question that as being something that I could bank on, I should say.
Okay. So the strategy that you develop for those high-crime areas, are we doing joint with FBI and Department, all of that? So it wouldn't be as expensive, because we're tying in with other resources?
Yes, every, I mean, I think the past, I think, not this past weekend, but for, for the last month prior to this weekend, we had worked in conjunction with the state police. In one instance, we probably had 20 to 25 police officers between us and state police, just, just sending a message to some of the, down on this end of Essex Street and Common Street, some of the clubs that are closed all at once. We deal with it probably, you know, anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 people all at once, exiting some nightclubs. And thankfully, we only made about three arrests, but I think we, we sent the message. And again, this, this is something that's been ongoing.
You send the message, don't mess around with us.
Right, correct.
I can, I get that. Counsel President, I just want to ask our Vice President if he would be asked, Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, explain to us a little bit about that $50,000. Thank you.
Sure. So there was, the discussion that took place at the Budget Committee was that because of the numbers of police officers that were not being, they're unfilled, that there would be some cost savings there. Because of those cost savings, the feeling was, well, we can certainly reduce the amount of monies that we would need to, to transfer, because there's already money built in to cost savings from unpaid or unfilled positions. So that was the thinking.
Okay. And then that would require some kind of transfer, right?
So what this proposal is looking to do, is it's looking to transfer money, the original request from the administration was for $250,000 from free cash.
Free cash.
To pay for the variety of items that are listed in our, in our, in our agenda, in various overtime categories. And the thinking at the subcommittee was that we could probably have some savings, and there'd be a less of a need for free cash transfers. So rather than 250, because of the cost savings, we could probably get, get away with 200. But the feeling was also at the subcommittee was that the subcommittee, I think, if I could speak on behalf of the committee, was very careful that we did not want to jeopardize police operations, and that should there be a need for those monies, that certainly the committee would be very welcome and come back and would be willing to go ahead and do that. So that's, the discussion took place.
Well, I just want to thank you so much for doing that, kind of rolling up your sleeves and, and really getting into what, what affects us and how we can best assist the police department. Thank you so much.
So if you, I, I'd like to provide some additional information. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. So in the discussion, based on the information that was provided to us at the subcommittee level, I was able to question both the Chief, as well as Amanda Wall, who works at the Police Department, in terms of the, the year-to-day expenses and the projection for the remaining of the fiscal year. And it came to our attention there that in the, we have budgeted $100,000 for severance pay. We are expecting currently one person to retire on their police operations, which, when asked, what, what would be the estimate for the retirement payout, it will give us roughly an additional, it will leave us with approximately $50,000 in the bank. So that's $50,000 there. For the uniform replacement, we still have $34,000, which has not been utilized and we're not planning to use for the remaining of the fiscal year, based on the discussion that we also had at the subcommittee. So that's another 34,000. That will give us 84. And in temporary salary, we had $50,000. And so far, I don't have the, the sheet with me, but I believe we had utilized 14,000, if I'm not mistaken, or roughly around there. I might be off by, is that...
There, I think those numbers are, are accurate, but the one thing that the police chief did mention is, he already has a lost time factor in his budget of 250,000. So we've, we're planning on 250,000 worth of salaries not being paid out, and I think that's why he kind of still needs the 250,000. He kind of factored his entire personal services budget when he put his $250,000 request together. And, and so the, any amounts not used on, on severance pay, or any amounts not used for, through vacancies, we've already have a subtract in his budget, 250,000, in anticipation of those needs.
Which is, which is correct. And also, based on what was provided to us, we are, the 250,000 will be utilized to pay 162,118.79 of overtime, which has already been utilized. So what that will do, the 200, if we were to approve 200 or 250 tonight, whichever amount we were to decide to go with, that will pay out the overtime expense. And the remaining balance, depending on whether we go with 250 or, or 200, will be available for additional overtime for the remaining of the fiscal year, in addition to the 109,000 that I have mentioned. The remaining 25 that I haven't explained is the, the temporary salaries and wages. So, so far, they spent approximately 14,000. If you look historically, we have never gone over 25. We budgeted 50 for the year. So as a result, I, I felt confident that, you know, based on, on last fiscal years, we have never gone over 25,000 in expenses. So why should we go over the, the 25,000 now in this year? So we could save 25 there. They still have 10,000 in temporary workers, if necessary, for the remaining of the fiscal year. So that will give us 109,000. 109,000, I apologize. So let's, let's do quick calculations. So we have the 109, plus, if we do 200, if we, if we move forward with the 200, 200,000 minus 162, that will, 200,000 minus 162, it will give us 38. If we do the 250, minus 162, it will be 88, plus the 109. So they will still have, if we go with the 200,000, so that will be 38 plus 109, that's 147,000 available for expenditure within the, the Police Department operation budgets. If we do the 200, 250, that will be an additional 197,000. Again, I personally feel confident that with the 147,000, that it is available with the 200,000 approval, we could function. If it is necessary in the future that the Police Department comes back to the City Council, I am also comfortable giving them the extra money if necessary. But given the fact that we have some funds available today, I consider that we should go ahead and use the funds that we have available now, and if the emergency or, or the nature comes in which we need to approve more in the future, we should. But let's be conservative in our, in our finances today, and that, that will be my suggestion, that as a body, we try to be as conservative as we can in the expenses. Because we do, based on, on the explanation given to us at the subcommittee, we have enough funds to be able to cover for it. Again, if something comes up in which the funds are needed, I will happily support the measure to, to include additional funding in the future.
Great.
So I hope that that explanation helped, rather than confuse the body.
It will help, because I still picture...
And I know it was quick calculations back and forth, so... If the 200 is approved again, I believe that they will have available 147 with the savings within the other budgets that has not been spent, and is not expected to be spent. If we go with the 250, they will have 197,000 available if they do not spend those funds once again. So it's, realistically, what I'm looking at is 147 versus 187, even though that's not what we are proving tonight. That's what I feel comfortable, that will be available.
Right. So do we need to amend the motion? Is it 250 right now?
It's 200 right now.
200 right now?
So the motion is 200 on the floor.
Okay, so, that's good.
Are there any further questions or comments? Counsel Madonado?
Chief.
Yes, sir.
This is a two-part question. We have increased the Police Department by what, 24? I believe 24, 25?
No, more than that. Since I've been there, it was one budgeted, when I took over, it was 119. Currently, it's budgeted for 145.
Okay, so what?
Is that 34?
About 28, 30 additional police officers?
Correct.
Okay. And obviously, we are overspending the, the overtime. The perception out there is that crime is not being controlled. So how can we explain to the taxpayers that we have increased the Police Department by more than 25 people, and that we are spending, we are overspending the overtime, and yet crime keeps rising? How can we explain to the people what is happening and why the number of police officers that have been increased and the overtime is not being, are not being effective?
Again, perception is a difficult thing to police. The crime has not risen. While I explained earlier that there are some high-profile cases of violence that grabs the headlines. The, myself and the administration have felt that to be proactive, to keep the city safe, that having more police officers on the street than less is, is a prudent course of action.
But it has not changed anything.
Yes, it has.
I don't know in whose eyes, because it's not in their perception of the people.
Again, perception is a difficult thing to police. The reality is, is that crime is down, less victims in the city. While some of our most violent crimes have risen, overall, there are less victims.
At your request, we approve an ordinance prohibiting the use of marijuana in public places. The Police Department has been aware that on Ames Street, at the end of Ames Street, every night, there is a group of vehicles there smoking marijuana. As a matter of fact, week and a half ago, two weeks, a lady was shot several times in that particular section of the city. And yet, I have never seen a police officer patrolling that particular area, which we know, and the police know, that is a hangout to violate an ordinance that we approve at your request. Is any particular reason why the police is not patrolling that area, and why the police is not questioning and stopping these vehicles that are using pot in, in, in a public street? Is any reasons, any explanation?
While I don't have that information in front of me right now for a specific, specific street in question, I can gather that. I will tell you that arrests have been made in that area. If we want to go a little bit further from Ames Street, or Dartmouth Street, Yale Street, those areas are very hotspots. Arrests have been made in that area last night, and arrest was made on Royal Street. We're constantly in those areas. Again, this is what these impact patrols provide for. Anecdotally, I can't answer that question.
I don't know. I frequent that area, and to be honest, I have never seen a cruiser any night that I have gone by, when I know that there are at least eight or 10 vehicles of youngsters smoking pot there. I have never seen a cruiser stopping or questioning anybody. And I, and I'm really concerned that we approve ordinances and that we are not enforcing them.
No, we will enforce those when they're, when necessary. While I appreciate your frustration, Counselor, I understand that, you know, we can't have, as much as I'd like to have a police officer on every street, that's just not possible.
But if we know that every night, if we know that every night of the week, on the weekends, there are at least eight or 10 vehicles, why are we taking proactive action to, to discourage that?
When you say "we know," are you, are you saying the Police Department knows?
The Police knows, because I have informed, we have spoken publicly a number of times, and I have informed publicly here at these meetings that that is a hot area, that is a hotspot, that every night, there are at least eight or 10 vehicles of youngsters smoking pot. That is, that is a known factor. I mean, if I know that, and I have spoken about that here in this meeting with you present, then what is it that is, that the police, why is it that the police is not actively enforcing this ordinance in that particular street? Is any particular reason why?
My memory escapes me on to what particular time you, you informed me of that, but now that you bring it to my attention, we will most certainly enforce any violations of the ordinance there.
Well...
Ames Street and what?
Okay. I'm not going to say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Counsel DePena.
Chief. For last two year, I listened when you come to the city meeting, when you go to the Latino radio. You said crime is possession. Believe me, Chief, crime and law and noise possession is reality. When you visited West Street last time, when you visited Lower Street last time, Manchester, Broadway, Cross Street, Park Street, Logan Street. I received complaint...
Every, every day.
Every day?
Every day.
But...
Every day.
Nah, I can, I can believe. Because I receive...
Do you mean, do you mean drive or walk?
Listen, I receive...
I'm listening.
I receive complaint every day, every, any single...
When's the last time you contacted me about a complaint?
Because you don't have...
Answer my question.
You don't have a plan for crime.
When's the last time you contacted me about a complaint?
Crimes is high.
When's the last time?
I have my business in Broadway... I have my business in Broadway, and I see crimes every single day.
When's the last time you contacted me about a complaint?
Listen, I have a, I have a
When's the last time you contacted me?
I have a meeting in your office, and nothing changed. Remember, you remember the last meeting I had? Because you don't have a plan for one reason, I don't have a reason
When's the last time you contacted my office?
Because
When's the last time you contacted my office?
Chief, now is possession.
You have complaints?
You don't even
How do I know you have complaints unless you contact my office?
You said it's possession because you don't even Lawrence, chief.
I visited your garage.
Counselor in chief, let's
Left my car.
So Counselor in chief, let's
I'm asking, he wants, he wants to know, he wants an answer to a question I'm asking him.
Because
He wants to tell me about complaints.
You only say it's possession, chief.
Wants to tell me about complaints.
Let's speak one person at a time, okay?
He doesn't contact my office.
One, one person at a time.
Is there any action, chief? Action.
Thank you, sir.
Not possession. I have my business in Broadway.
I understand.
I see every day, crime, 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 not possession. You bought it increase, increase overtime, and nothing changed, chief, sorry.
I disagree, sir, respectfully.
I have my family, I have my kid, and believing
Respectfully, I disagree, sir.
My family living in Lawrence, you know.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, chief. Document 348, 38417, Mr. Vice President.
What are we looking at?
Thank you very much, Council President. The Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to send this document, 38417, out to the full council with favorable recommendation. This is a, this is an item to transfer $750,000 from free cash to the city attorney's litigation account. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made.
Discussion.
Properly second, discussion, Counselor Maldonado.
Attorney Boarding?
Yes, good evening.
Can you provide us with some details that are possible, that is not going to interfere with
Yes.
With the litigation?
We have outside counsel retained to handle ongoing contract negotiations. We've had some very successful contract negotiations, and there are still yet a few unions that have not settled, and we're working on that, as well as grievances. So a great portion of this is to be used for outside labor counsel to handle not only grievances and arbitrations and civil service hearings, but also the union negotiations. We have a case coming up for trial in February. We're anticipating that the cost of that trial will be about $30,000, maybe $40,000. It's very similar to a case that this outside law firm has already handled and won, a prior case. So it's, the cases are substantially similar, and that's why they're handling this one. And then the rest will be used for additional items such as depositions, transcripts, et cetera, as well as the Gilmet School case, if we end up trying that case, which is scheduled for trial sometime after February, but that will also be tried in the spring. Tomorrow, I have to go to Boston for a deposition. We've already spent two or three days a week for the past couple of weeks in depositions, and you can anticipate it might be a couple thousand dollars each time we have a deposition. So when I came before the City Council back at the budget hearing time, I did advise the council that I was level funding, as we've done every year for the past several years, but the level fund of the budgeted amount has never been sufficient, and that I would be back probably around the time that free cash was determined. And so I am back, as I suggested to you back six months ago I would be. And I want to provide, if I may, just some background information that I provided to the subcommittee, which I think is very telling. For, I just went back for a couple of years, but fiscal year 2016, 17, and 18, every year in the line item for outside, outside legal services, we've budgeted $225,000. In fiscal year 2016, we came back for a supplemental appropriation of over $1 million, $1,205,000 to be specific. Last year, we budgeted, as I said, 225. We came back for $958,120. And this year, we again budgeted 225. We've taken a look at trends, and when I say trends, this is a lot like snow and ice. It's difficult to anticipate because a lot of our expenses are triggered by activities of other councils, activities of grievance in the labor process, or people who sue the city. So you have to have a little bit of a crystal ball sometimes to really do anything too accurate, and we don't have that. So we've taken a look at the trends, what we're paying for outside counsel on a, pretty much on a monthly basis, and we've carried that forward, projected that through the year. The next thing we've done is we've taken a look at, for example, the case that's going to be tried in February. We looked at, it's the same, same issues, different plaintiff, same law firm. What was the cost to try that? Well, that was for the actual trial, the weeks before trial, and the trial itself was about $20,000 to $40,000. We're anticipating a similar thing. So based on all of those projections, as well as anticipating some of the other law firms that we have doing work, we're going to need, we think, $750,000. It's very unfortunate that we need that, I admit, but on the other hand, it's, it's less than we've been supplementing ourselves with for the past several years. The good news is, we did settle the high school litigation this past year and a few other cases, and I don't foresee any big trials or big settlements where we might have a big payout. The only case that's really projected to be tried this fiscal year is, is that one in February and the Gilmet School case, which will be very expensive. Where we, as you know, we're, we're handling that in-house now, but expert witness fees, depositions, it's anticipated that I'll be going out to Indiana and to Pennsylvania for out-of-state depositions. All those expenses will be quite expensive in order to get us to the trial. So in a nutshell, that's what it's about.
Okay.
Big, big portion of this, to answer your question, can I tell you specific cases? No, because in the greater part, it's contract negotiation, grievances, civil service hearings. We've been, I might add, very successful on civil service appeals. We've had probably half a dozen bypass appeals in the past several months, and we haven't lost one. So that's what a lot of this is.
You indicated that most of the money, most of the $750,000 have been used for negotiations, union negotiations. Am I correct?
You, about, about $400,000 of this is anticipated to be used for union negotiations as well as labor relations, outside labor relations council.
In the past, with the help of the overseer, state attorneys have been helping the city with negotiation. Is that still happening or is
Yes.
It's still happening?
Yes.
But we still have to pay them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are you aware of any new lawsuits by employees from the library?
There is one lawsuit that was reported in the newspaper. It is a case that was brought in two other fora. It was before the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination. It was also before the Department of Labor Relations. It arose from an employee who was, I believe, laid off from his position several years ago in the Planning and Development Department. We've won the MCAD case. We won the Department of Labor, Division of Labor, Department of Labor Relations, I'm sorry, they were a division, they've now a department. We won both of those. They've now filed a, this individual has filed a case in Superior Court, and outside counsel has handled that in the MCAD instance, as well as before Labor Relations, and that same outside counsel, because of the similarity of issues, is handling the Superior Court case.
Okay, but you're not aware whether there is a new lawsuit by an employee of the library? Am I correct?
An employee of what?
Of the library.
No, I haven't, I, I've heard stories, I've been told that there was going to be a lawsuit, et cetera. I have received nothing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Counselors, any further questions? Counselor, Counselor LaPlante was first, and Counselor.
So just so I'm clear, $400,000, you say is going to be for union negotiations? Is that accurate?
No.
Okay.
What I've said is, union negotiations and external labor relations, which includes grievances, civil service appeals, litigation, MCAD, all sorts of things related to discharge, discipline, and termination of employees.
Can you split that pie a little bit thinner? Out of that $400,000, which goes to the contract negotiations and which goes to all the others?
I, I'm going to have to speculate a little bit to do it, but to do it, I would say probably maybe a fourth to a third of that amount would be for ongoing negotiations. I, I would remind with, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I would remind the council that, as we just learned when we talked about arbitrations, when we're spending money on union negotiations, the unions are as well, because they have outside counsel too.
So, again, as I mentioned during the Budget Committee meeting, we are not necessarily, we're not a party to the negotiations, we just fund the ultimate bill. We don't digger about what the provisions are, we don't discuss the various terms of the agreement, we just get the bill, and we say this is what's going to cost, and then we ultimately pay the bill. This is
Well, I would say that the majority of these collective bargain agreements do come down to the council for approval after the negotiations have ended and there's been an agreement in principle.
Because it's over three years?
I'm not sure.
We don't, we don't agree with any contracts unless it's over three years.
They all do. Yeah, they all do.
They're all over three years?
No, but they all come
It's not for a year, it's just any collective bargain agreement.
Yeah. I know that they've, yeah, I, I just know that they've been down here. I know we've, because we had an issue, frankly, and, and you may recall it, we had an issue with the SEIU as to whether we had a contract or didn't have a contract. So I am aware that they come down for approval, and at that time, it would be the time when you would have input, perhaps a little bit of closing the barn door after the horse has gotten away, I understand, but nonetheless, that, that is an opportunity for input from the council.
Anyway, that's, the point that I'm trying to make is not necessarily that, but actually just to, just to lay this point, which is, does it make more sense for us to use the money that we're going to be spending on outside councils, like to fund the contracts, than it is to actually pay outside counsel to negotiate for us? I mean, the money's going somewhere. It's either going to the attorneys, or it's going to be going to our city employees. Where is the money best being spent?
I, I recognize the question. I have to say that that is a policy decision that's made by the client, not by me, and that's not simply trying to avoid the question, but it, it, you know, even with settlements and handling of cases, well, you know it, being an attorney yourself, we respect the client's wishes. It's not my decision as to how funds should be spent and allocated, given those two choices. I might have a, have a role in deciding whether it's be spent on this deposition or that deposition, or this case or that case, but whether to spend it on negotiations or instead to use it to settle the contract, that's, that's a policy decision that's beyond me.
Okay, so since the administration is here and Mr. Rionello is here, who's part of the negotiating team? Are you part of the negotiating team, Mr. Rionello?
Yeah, this year, I've been part of all the negotiations for all the union agreements.
From one counselor to the budget director through you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I would, I would ask this question, and I'm not expecting an answer this evening, but as we consider the posture that we have in negotiations, please consider whether or not it makes more sense for us to spend the money that we otherwise would be spending on attorneys to actually spend it on city employees. So I don't know all the details, you're at the table, I'm not, and there's plenty of nuances that I'm freely admitting to, I don't know. But I just ask you to take that back with you as you further negotiations.
So noted.
Thank you. Counselors, any further questions?
Yeah, I can
I'm sorry, Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Do you like to go first? Go ahead. All right, so you, Council President. Hi, Attorney Body again.
Hi.
The questions that I have are pertaining to the high school. You said we reached a settlement, is that something you can tell us?
Yes, we settled that case several months, I think it was actually maybe May or April or May of last year for $1.5 million.
Did we win or did we just break out even?
We settled the case. That means we didn't get everything we wanted, but we got more than they wanted to give. Winners.
Okay, so what does that mean in dollars?
In, in, what does it mean in what?
In dollars.
1.5 million.
1.5 million.
It was 1.1 million 550,000 dollars.
That was for the high school?
That was for the high school, yes.
And what did we want initially? Was it two?
Do you remember, Mark?
Over 5 million.
Over 5 million.
Uh huh.
Sorry. At least we got something and didn't have to pay them.
Yeah.
And you're saying with the Gilmet?
Gilmet School
We will have to go to trial.
The total value, well, we're, we're heading to trial. The total value of the Gilmet School, including interest, et cetera, in an ideal situation, an ideal world with nothing but wins on our side, would be about $10 million. That includes ongoing interest, et cetera. The reality is that the court issued an order last spring that carved out exceptions to that amount of money. So the attorney's fees, which are considerable over, over much time, three different law firms, four different law firms, whatever the case may be, the court has said we're unlikely to recover the bulk of that. There are a bunch of claims that are defects, but they were defects that should have been identified according to the court, not that we agree, back in 2004, and as a result, we shouldn't, according to the court, be able to recover for those. So that $10 million suddenly gets whittled down to, you know, maybe 5 million, 4 million?
Well, when we look at 5 million was what we proposed, and we settled for 1.5, and does that 1.5 include expenses?
No. Well, yeah, that, that was, that one, that 1.5 was everything. That's everything. Everything we've spent, everything we had to fix, et cetera, et cetera.
Including legal services?
Yes. But remember, too, a lot of those damages were soft cost damages, and that, that means that there was a fine for every day of delay. So in that $5 million might have been, you know, a $20,000 per day fine for delaying the opening of the new high school.
So did you waive that, or are they going to pay those fines?
We settled the case, we didn't waive anything. We settled the case, and it's not based on cherry picking certain parts of the case or the claim. We, we settled it based upon a, an offer and our, looking at our reasonable likelihood of success and what we would win on it. I might say to you, too, that this was at the time that we discharged our outside counsel. We fired them.
Right. So we couldn't continue with this one because we were
We, we continued with the Gilmet School, we fired them also on that case, too.
Yeah.
We're handling that in-house.
Okay, so what you're saying is the 1.5 also includes those daily fines?
1.5 was the settlement amount for all of our claims of all of our damages resulting from all, all the, the issues, including delay.
So the amount that we spend on legal services, the amount of fines that we provided is already included in 1.5, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I asked. The other one is the Gilmet School. How much longer you think we're gonna?
It's scheduled to go to trial in the spring.
In the spring.
Sometime Sometime in February, we're gonna have a pre-trial conference and get a trial date.
So, were we trying to negotiate some type of settlement before going, or does it normally take this long?
I don't wanna get into that at this time.
Okay, so that's private, I mean, that's...
I think that's a matter that I think is not appropriate for discussion at this time in this forum.
Right, okay, so I'll call you on that, 'cause I thought we were gonna go to executive session, but we didn't.
I don't think we need to, to be quite honest, and I'm happy to discuss this with you, you know, on a...
Yes, I'll call you on that.
Yeah, on a private level, a personal level.
I guess we decide if we need to, right?
Yes, you do.
All right, the other issue is, what has been the strategy that you and the administration are looking at in terms of getting us a real-life labor attorney in your office?
The labor attorney is hired by the mayor, and the mayor has hired somebody in that position, so we have a labor attorney in the office.
No, we've already agreed, and that person was before us, when we agreed that he was not fulfilling that role, he was doing other things.
Oh, he's...
And, I mean, I'm thinking about the gentleman we had before, he was great.
Yes.
He was great, taking care of these things, and you need another one like that on your side. So, I asked, why is HR, or I hate that they call it Personnel Department, not involved in trying to help identify people, even if you're at this moment not hiring for that position, but it's something that we know we lack, our city needs? So, are you gonna be able to work alongside or request that HR help, 'cause I know you gotta deal with our cases, and that's something that HR should be able to help with? Have you considered that?
I would welcome additional help and staff in our office, but at this point, I don't, given the budget that I have for this year and the need to supplement it at this time, I don't see that as happening this year. I welcome, I welcome your input as a counselor and as a soon-to-be citizen, as well as all the other counselors to express themselves at the budget time to the mayor and others, but, you know, those are matters that aren't within my control.
Okay, 'cause I know one of the things we also discussed was creating an ordinance for a third, a little third lawyer, which would fit right in with what this person is now doing, and free up that labor, if I remember correctly, that was the discussion, for a real, for a person, not a real labor, but a person with much more experience dealing with labor issues, civil services, et cetera.
We have two additional positions that are already ordinance that are unfilled in my department. We have a first, second, a third, and a fourth Assistant City Attorney's positions, but they haven't been filled since 2008?
And what has been the reason for that?
Financial.
Financial. I think it's something that, you know...
We laid, I beg your pardon, I don't mean to interrupt, we laid people off in December of 2008, I thought, I think was the beginning.
Wow.
We had nine people in the office, we now have two full-time attorneys, a part-time attorney, and one paralegal.
Do you believe that you guys did a great job having that number of people in your office, and did it reduce the necessity for outside counsel?
We certainly could use additional staff, however, it is difficult to compare today to then. We were not as busy then as we are today. We had more attorneys, less work, the bulk of the attorneys back then were people who weren't working full-time, they had their own private practices outside, we now require, you can still maintain a private practice, but basically, this is your full-time job. So, the situation's a little bit different. Could we, and would we benefit from an additional attorney? Yes.
Sure.
In my opinion, in my opinion.
I think, you know, we all see it that way.
Yep.
That you guys need help. But please, have that chat with the mayor and the HR person, if you'd like me to be present, whether I'm sitting here or not, I'll come, okay?
That's very kind of you, and I'll remember that, thank you.
And I'll talk, you know, I'll talk about it, 'cause I think everybody here knows how important it is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your discussion with me, and thank you, Counsel President, for allowing it.
Thank you. Counselor T.
So, just following that train of thought, that's Counselor Nocavero Rodriguez and Counselor LaPlante, and just looking at the history and how we've been using our spending, and I'm thankful that in 2018, we're asking for 750 and not 1.2 million, and I know it doesn't change things or what you're asking for right now, because it is what it is. What we're at right now is where we're at, but Mr. Rianello and yourself are in a unique position of what, of continuing on in this work and looking forward. And so, if we're breaking out roughly that 750,000 is what we're gonna need to cover contracts, union negotiations, some upcoming trials, I would also reiterate the point that Counsel LaPlante made, and said that when we're looking at 400,000 in union negotiations, what is it that we're really gaining? What is it that we're really gaining, and what is the trade-off? When we have two, three positions that are going unfilled for so many years now, our city is not being represented correctly, and I don't think we're being fiscally responsible based on the information that I've just heard. I think that we're in a position to do it better, and to do it regardless of what everyone else's opinions are. You have a city council here that is supportive of its departments, and you have a city council here that has voiced its concern, and whether it's the last meeting, second to the last meeting of the year, the work continues. And the work continues for the rest of the people here in the body and the new people that are coming on, for us to watch what we're doing and be strategic about it. Business as usual is not enough, working in silos is not enough, and so just know that you're supported, and I continue to pay taxes here, and I'll be back in another, what, year and a half? These terms are very short, and so, 400,000 in new union negotiations, 750,000, I wanna see 750,000 in replacing people inside, not only your office, but in DPW and the city clerk's office. I wanna see next time that where we're, when we're anticipating, things are going to happen, labor relations are going to happen. We're in the nature of people, correct?
Yes.
But when it comes to dollars and cents, let's make sure that it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor LaPlante?
Almost, oh, thank you. One more thing, I just wanted, just to be on the record, I fundamentally disagree with the earlier, this mention about the council's obligations with respect to ratifying contracts. I don't think that we do, so we have a difference of opinion, I just wanted to make sure that I offer that, a difference of opinion, 'cause I think we do fund, we don't approve, unless the approval's over three years, but I don't wanna debate this any further, we can have a difference of agreement, I just wanted to make sure that record was clear. Thank you.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Saying there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors?
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you very much. Next business, next order of business is the Ordinance Committee report, but I was wondering if we could take the Budget and Finance Committee reports first? We have Sue Fink here in the audience, so I think it would be best to get her out first, if that's okay? I'd like to call for...
Motion to take it out of order?
So, motion has been made, and properly second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Let's start with document 386-17, Mr. Vice President. 386-17, yes.
What about this one? What about that one?
386. How about 378?
We'll do the 3 for Sue first.
Oh, I'm sorry, very good, my bad.
What number is it, do you know?
386-17.
386?
I got it, thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to send this document up 386-17 to the full council with a favorable recommendation. This is a, this is an acceptance of a grant of the sum of 49,950 dollars with respect to the Mass Alliance on Team Pregnancy Incorporated, make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second, any discussion?
Discussion?
Question, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Just very quickly, through you, Council President, I'd like to hear Miss Fink talk a little bit about this grant.
Sure. Good evening, Counselors. This particular grant, we're in the third year of a grant.
Third year.
It's an initiative funded by the Office of Adolescent Health with the Mass Alliance on Team Pregnancy.
Uh huh.
We're the only community funded in Massachusetts, and there's only two communities funded in the Northeast region. Initially, this was going to be a five-year grant, but unfortunately, the federal funding has been reduced, and we're going to be in the last year of this particular grant.
I'm sorry.
And, yeah, we are as well. The goal of this grant is to reduce unintended pregnancy and sexually transmitted illnesses, to reduce disparities, and promote healthy adolescent development among Lawrence youth ages 12 to 19. To date, 615 teens have completed evidence-based curriculums on comprehensive sex education. This year alone, 180 have successfully completed this initiative. We have...
Boys and girls?
Yes. We have got youth-friendly healthcare linkages and referrals, and that goal is to evaluate youth-friendliness of the local healthcare centers. There's a youth advisory board with 10 youth, and their goal is to help inform the work and dissemination of communication, and we're working to create a sustainability plan once this grant funding ceases.
Great, thank you.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Saying there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The next document is document 387-17, Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Budget Committee, this up with a favorable recommendation to accept the grant of 150,000 dollars for the Mass in motion, make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Question has been made, and properly second, any discussion?
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Thank you. Miss Fink, this grant is...
So, this grant is a statewide movement that promotes opportunities for healthy eating and active living in places where people live, learn, work, and play. So, the goal is to improve overall health outcomes by reducing and removing barriers that limit accessibility to healthy food, and opportunity for physical activities, and to promote healthy and safe physical spaces statewide. So, in Lawrence, our initiatives are the Healthy on the Block program with the bodegas and park and open space planning. So, right now, we're working with 22 bodegas to improve the access of fresh fruits and vegetables. One of these bodegas is actually offered to become a wholesale distributor for some other small stores.
Nice.
We're hoping to enroll 30% of the bodegas in Lawrence in this program. All the bodegas have received technical assistance by Mill City Community Investments, a local CDFI, which has resulted in two credit repairs, two owners looking to buy physical space to expand their businesses, and one is hoping to expand his business. We have adopted a park maintenance checklist by the DPW, they used this initially this spring, and it has been incorporated into their system of maintenance. We're working on and adopt a park slash space initiative, and we hope to present this to the DPW Director for implementation. We worked with the Planning Department to implement the Complete Streets Policy, which was adopted two years ago. We have activated open spaces with the salsa program, which, salsa festival rather, which is the first Saturday in June each year, and the Sique Levia, which is on the first and third Sundays in August.
So, does this target a specific group, or anybody can participate?
This is funding for the Mass Health Task Force, so it basically is partial funding for the Director and the Community Health Specialist.
So, it's more administrative?
It's more policy development than actual physical projects.
And for them to enroll proper eating...
Correct, yes.
Through channels that the people access to buy their food?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not free for them?
Yes.
Once they purchase the proper food, then people have to buy it, it's not made to them, it's made available to them?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the idea is to have the fresh fruits and vegetables more prominently displayed in the bodegas, and to increase the amount of fresh fruits and vegetables that they have on hand.
And classes, there's still classes around, right? I mean, we have a high rate of diabetics, we have a high rate of heart disease.
Correct.
And so on, and so on, we have a high, and a lot of it is associated with healthy or unhealthy eating.
Correct.
So, it'd be great to be able to teach people a little bit about what, how to eat, and more importantly, how to afford buying, you know, the nutritious food that we're talking about.
Correct.
Oftentimes, it's poverty that leads to sweetened cereals, et cetera, and eating whatever's available, and I think we need to change that.
I agree.
Thank you, Miss Fink.
So, we've actually had this funding for two years, and this is funding for initial three years, 50,000 dollars per year.
So, we predict we'll have this again?
So, we'll get 50,000 dollars each year for the next three years.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Saying there's no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 388-17, Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to send this document up without a recommendation. This is a emergency solution grant acceptance for the sum of 136,695. I submit it as a committee report only, make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made to approve as a committee report, it's been properly second, any discussion?
One question.
We're gonna talk about this, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna make, I'll make a motion right after.
Yeah, we're just accepting the report.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
President, I'd like to make a motion that we not accept this document.
Motion to deny has been made, is there a second?
Second discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
Discussion?
Discussion, for discussion purposes, so, we had this, a presentation, this was a grant that was not applied for by the City of Lawrence, it was money that was essentially given by this city, by...
HUD.
By HUD, that deals with the homelessness issue, and there's a lot of questions with respect to it. I'm, at the end of this discussion, I'd be happy to go ahead and table it, but my concern here is, is why is the City of Lawrence getting money for the homelessness issue? Once, the perception of that appears to me, it's not that we don't have a problem here, clearly we do, but the question is, is, once the federal government and others get their foot in the door and saying, this is the place we wanna go to, to really start dealing with the homelessness issue, then we now become the community in the area that's going to be the beacon, the area that's, we're gonna be dealing with the homelessness issue, 'cause we're the ones getting the grant money to deal with it. So, my concern is, is yes, while this maybe sounds great to get money, and I don't know all the details, which is why I'm perfectly willing to table it, but I think the perception that, why isn't our neighboring communities getting this money, or is it just Lawrence getting this money? And we didn't even ask for this money, but we're getting it, and it just concerns me just based on that alone, that if we're going down this direction, that we're gonna be asked to do a lot more, and that just concerns me.
Counsel Madonado?
I agree with you, Counsel LaPlante, definitely, we have to be very concerned. We have to be very concerned, why don't they give that money to Endover or North Endover and Methuen? Like yourself, I'm willing to table it, to look at more details, but if we're gonna be used as a satellite to experiment... we're gonna be used as a satellite to experiment with the homeless here, I would definitely oppose it.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, Council President, I, I just, I have to echo the words of my colleagues here. They are definitely listening to what the people have said to us time after time, not to allow us to be used as, for experimental reasons, and for us to try to hold our neighboring communities or cities and municipalities or towns, are holding them accountable as well, that we're not, we should not be the only ones fighting this issue.
Council Ortiz.
I make a motion that we table it.
Council Ortiz.
Wait, she wants to talk.
I didn't have one question.
Sorry.
Thank you so much for, for being here with us. Can you just give me a little bit more information on this grant? What, what is the intent, and how did it come about?
Okay, the Emergency Solutions Grant is a formula grant, just like the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Program. So, it's based on a formula allocation created by Congress. We happened to fall into the, the allocation this year because of the high number of homeless people we counted during the point-in-time count last year. We received ESG funding up until two thousand and four, and then we just happened to fall out of the formula because we didn't have as many homeless people counted during the point-in-time count. That's one of the reasons why some of your neighboring communities don't receive this funding.
Because they don't fall into the formula.
Exactly. It's, it's a set formula, it's applied across the country, and sometimes you're in, sometimes you're out, it depends on, on how many people you count each year. What this can be used for is, it can be used for street outreach, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention, and the Homeless Management Information System, which is a database tracking system mandated by HUD. We had a discussion with the mayor, and it was determined that rapid rehousing would be the best use for these funds, and what we would do with that is, someone has to be literally homeless, which means they're sleeping in a place not fit for human habitation, or they're in a shelter, they're on the street, they're in a car. Couch surfing doesn't count, that's not considered homeless under the federal guidelines, and we would assist them in rapidly finding a housing unit. It could be here in Lawrence, it could be in Methuen, it could be in Havrell, it just has to serve a Lawrence person. So, once you spend one night in Lawrence, we would consider you a Lawrence resident. So, it could be someone who came from another community, and we would find them housing. We would pay security deposit for us from last month's rent, and if warranted, we may do short-term rental assistance. There would be a case management component, and the case management would require to find additional resources to help this individual continue maintaining their housing once our funding ran out.
And so, this funding is, do, 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 what did I just put the number? So, this is one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars?
Yes.
So, for one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, we are going, the intent is to do rapid rehousing?
Correct.
And who is administering this? Like, where is the money? The money's going to...
The Office of Planning and Development.
And then who's doing rapid rehousing, because you don't do that?
We would be issuing an RFP for an agency to administer this program for us.
So, you would, you would have, you would issue an appeal for an agency to use this money to help people find housing?
Right.
Okay, I'm putting some things together now, and in turn, be able to, and so the criteria for this money just means if you can come from anywhere, and you step within six point, whatever, nine-eight square miles, now you're, this is accessible to you.
As long as you have slept somewhere not intended for human habitation and have documentation.
And have documentation, so document, the only game in town for documentation would be the Daybreak Shelter.
Or if an outreach worker saw you sleeping in your car, they could write an affidavit saying that they...
Okay.
You could go to the emergency room, and we could get an affidavit from them as well.
Okay. So, that's what the intent is, and will there be additional monies used in order to have this work through an agency?
This grant requires a hundred percent match, so the agency that replies to this RFP would be required if we award them a hundred thousand dollars, let's say.
Right.
They would need to come up with a hundred thousand dollars in either cash or in-kind services. So, the in-kind services could be staff time at their agency paid for by another source. So, it's a, it's a pretty hefty lift for an agency to take this on.
To take this on. I think that I'm going to have to agree that we table this matter. There's a lot of information that you've shared. I think that this is a good thing. I don't think that the homeless are, are going to go away just because we don't look at them. Actually, today, I, I put on my Facebook Live, Merrimack College students from TKE, I hope I got it correct, they tried to teach me a hundred times, they're sleeping outside for the next five to six days in unity with the homelessness situation that we have going on here, bringing awareness on their campus, and raising money, and supporting, they're specifically supporting Lazarus House, and giving that money specific to them, but they are outside on carboards in the square, right in front of Sacagawea.
On campus?
On campus, sleeping out since Sunday. Because they want to bring awareness to this homelessness issue. So, we cannot help what a formula says. We cannot say to the federal government, "Change your formula." If we fall in the formula, we fall in the formula. What we do with this opportunity, we can have a little bit of oversight with, and let's see if we can go through the weeds a little bit, to be sure that of this one hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars, the most possible is going to services and to help people transition into stable housing.
You, you.
Council Abdu.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Ms. Fink, I recently asked the question, I'll now pose to you, since this is, formula is based on population. What is the homeless population of Lawrence, and when was that number codified?
Every year on the last Wednesday in January, across the country, a homeless point-in-time count is done. So, last January, or this Janu, this past January, we counted one hundred and one individuals living out on the street in Lawrence.
One hundred and one, last Wednesday of January.
Mm-hmm.
So, it'll happen again in just a few weeks, several weeks.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilo Depeña. Council Maldonado.
I understand there is a homeless coordinator?
Yes, there is.
I also understand that he works...
It's Homeless Initiatives Coordinator. His title is Homeless Initiatives Coordinator.
I understand that he works out of the library.
He does not, he works out of the office, he works out of the Office of Planning and Development. He does office hours on Friday at the library from nine to eleven.
Oh. I also understand that he don't speak to the homeless.
Of course he does.
He does.
On a daily basis, on a daily basis, he is doing outreach to the homeless.
He speaks to the homeless.
He does.
Has he identified the other homeless by name, address, and where they come from, or anything like that?
He is working with someone in the police department, and they are actually taking photos of the homeless and writing down information, so they're, they're creating a list.
Do we have information, good information about who the homeless are?
He does have that information.
He does have information.
I do not have it, but he does, yes.
Okay.
Can you send us?
I will.
Sir?
Oh, yeah. The question is, do we know the total number of homeless that we have already in the city?
At this very moment, he recently gave me some statistics, and I'm gonna say it's probably between sixty and seventy-five that he's identified.
Has that number increased from the last year?
That's a decrease. We counted a hundred and one in January.
I'm sorry?
We counted a hundred and one in January, so that would be a decrease.
So, there was an increase?
Can you, can, I would like to, I would like to get some feedback from the homeless coordinator as to what is, what that coordinator is doing, whether any transition has been made, how many homeless have been helped so far, etc., etc. I would like to, Mr. President, I would like that we, before I leave the city council this year, that we invite the homeless coordinator at our last meeting, so we can get some feedback.
I will certainly pass that information along to the Director of the Department.
Okay, so we'll table this for that.
Counselors, before the...
Motion to table?
Second.
Before it's tabled, we have Councilo Depeña.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes. We have Councilo Depeña.
Yes. I think it's time for send a mention to the state government and federal government, program and grant for support, you know, different program, and Lawrence is necessary. I think, I think it's time for send this grant to Andover, Methuen, because if Lawrence continue to receive ground for homeless, and my, I, you know, maybe somebody outside said, "Oh, that's, that's not fair, Brian," you know, said that the homeless don't need to have, but is enough homeless in Lawrence. I think it's a good idea, send the money back to another, another town, Andover, Methuen, because every homeless come to Lawrence, because every program come to Lawrence. If Lawrence continue receive more grounds, more program for support homeless, Lawrence receive homeless every single day, I think it's enough, I don't support them.
Can I just make a, a point of clarification on that? If we, if you vote not to accept this money, it won't go to another community, it'll go back to the federal government and the Treasury.
It won't what?
It will not go to another community, it'll just go back into the Treasury.
Counselors, I am very data-driven, and, and I think it's incongruent that HUD is offering us one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for, to solve, or to assist in the homeless situation in our city. When, when we look at document 38617, even though it's not coming from HUD, it's coming from the Department of Health and Human Services, they are providing us with fifty thousand to assist in the, in the team pregnancy situation in Lawrence. So, it is incongruent, the fact that next year, the Department of Health and Human Services is not going to continue to provide those funds to communities like Lawrence, but they are willing, you know, another department, federal department, is willing to give us funds to assist in this situation. The reason I'm bringing this up is, why are you not, I'm not saying you, Ms. Fink, why is the federal government inconsistent with what they're preaching? You have funds that are being provided this year, which will not be provided next year, to assist in team pregnancy. Unfortunately, I don't have the data with me tonight, but I am sure there's a correlation of early pregnancy, team pregnancy, and homelessness. So, if we truly want to have an impact on that in a city like Lawrence, let's ensure that the team pregnancy rate is reduced or eliminated completely, so we don't have to accept funds like this. Because I honestly don't think that this one hundred and thirty-six will be utilized with homeless individuals that are Laurentians. It will be mostly utilized with homeless individuals that are, will be coming to Lawrence, and as a result, will become new Lawrence residents eventually, but they have not been Laurentians, and they will be coming from out of state, they will be coming from other communities. So, if we want to have a positive and a long-term impact, let's put our money where it is truly needed. I believe that we need money to prevent team pregnancy, we need money to prevent, you know, overdoses in the streets, we need money for other purposes. This is not, I'm not, I'm gonna vote against tabling the document, not because I don't think that the discussion should continue, but simply because I don't think that this money should be accepted. Not every dollar should be approved, and I think this is one of those dollar amounts that will not be sufficient to ensure that we solve the problem that we have. I unfortunately feel that this will bring an additional burden to the Department of Community Development that is already doing so much. You guys are doing wonderful things.
Thank you.
And I will not want to bring in one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which is gonna take away time and energy to not see substantial results from things that you're doing today, and you're doing it right. And, you know, there's new energy, there's enthusiasm in that department. I think this one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is actually bad money for the department and for the city. So, for that reason, I will be voting against, against tabling it, not because I don't think that it should be tabled, but because I, I honestly don't want to accept these funds. So, all those in favor to table, there's gonna be a motion.
I haven't made a ta...
That's right.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem, I, let me make the motion to reject it.
The motion is on the floor.
I make a motion to table.
Yeah, it's motion.
So, a motion to table has been made, I'm properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Mr. Clerk, Roque, please.
Council Depeña.
Yes.
Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Ortiz.
Yes.
Council Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Council President.
No. Motion passes. Okay? Motion was tabled, so the document was not approved.
Okay, so where does that, where does that leave us?
It's, it's on a limbo right now.
Do we have to keep coming back every meeting? I just want to make sure that if you have questions, I'm here.
It will be up to the council when we...
Want to invite Nellie over for the next meeting?
That's exactly what we're doing.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, for the next meeting, so for Nellie to come.
Invite the coordinator, homeless coordinator.
So, with the homeless coordinator.
To bring...
And we're gonna bring this up.
I'll let Bill know. She'll have, she'll have to invite you.
What the hell?
Okay?
Thank you.
So, councilors, let's go back to the top of the agenda. Councilor Estela Reyes excused herself due to a personal commitment for the ordinance. Oh, we have one more for Budget and Finance, let's just finalize Budget and Finance. 37817.
37817.
Mr. Chair and Vice President.
37817. That's in the back of the agenda, right here.
The budget, thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Finance Committee met and voted favorably to send this up with, I'm sorry, send this with favorable recommendation. This is a grant for two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. It's for the, it will be funding the FY, it's called the FY Support and Incentive Grant, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Okay, second and discussion.
Second discussion, Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes. Did the chief explain to the committee, the program?
Sure, so, very briefly, and I can't go into a lot of detail, he's got the command and master of this, but essentially, what we're talking about here is providing more money for the nine-one-one telecommunications center, and trying to get, I guess that, that is a source that continually needs to be developed, and a financial commitment needs to be paid to try to upgrade the equipment there and the personnel cost, so, it's for nine-one-one.
And the personnel would be civilians?
I'm sorry?
Civilians?
I think that the nine-one-one folks, I think they're, I'm not sure.
Can you repeat the question again?
The question is whether or not the nine-one-one operators are civilian or police. I think there's a combination, actually, I think I've seen, and that, a combination of folks, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I understand that they're civilians, but I, I think I've seen police officers do it as well.
I've seen police officers manning that.
Okay, and, and do we have to match any of this?
I don't think there's any matching costs. You ask that Council President all the time.
And with this first infusion... And with this first infusion of dollars, would it be enough that we don't depend on it for the next, you know, what is the, they talk to you-
Right.
About sustaining?
Right, so this is a one, this is, we've received this grant in the past, this is not the first time we received money for 911 and telecommunications, and so it's a grant to do upgrades. So I, I can't give for you the breakdown of personnel costs versus equipment costs, that's a question that, that's better left for the chief, but, um, there was no concern, at least alerted to us by the chief, that this would be a mandate or a funding source that will require continual monies in, in the following years. In other words, we're not putting outlays out there that we're not gonna be able to maintain. That wasn't a concern.
So with this one infusion, they can get the equipment they need?
It's an upgraded equipment. It's, it's an upgrade, correct, Counsel?
Right, so we don't need a sustainability plan, not when, you know, not like when they hire the police officers to agree, we then need a plan-
I understand what you're saying, right, when you, when you, when you bring people on board, if you don't have a funding source of yours in the future, you're gonna have a problem, that's right.
Right, so I'm gonna trust the committee very much, it has not ever let me down, so I'm gonna trust them and follow their recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors, let's go back to the ordinance committee report, Counselor Estela Reyes, who's the chair for the ordinance committee, and Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez, who's the vice chair of the committee, both excuse themselves. Oh, Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Alvarez Rodriguez is the vice chair.
So we have a, a couple of documents, Counsel Maldonado, what are you gonna do?
Yes, uh, there is a number of documents here that is to order public hearing.
Right, I was offering that we take it as a block.
Take it as a block, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say what the addresses are, I guess, real quick.
Yeah, I think that's on, the document number and the address.
And the address, okay. So, um, the ordinance committee met and forward to the full council, uh, request for public hearings on document 30617, handicap parking for 12th Park Street, Goya, Candelario. Document 33017, handicap parking 90-92 Greenwood Street, Justice Counsel Rodriguez. Document 31, 33117, handicap parking 208 Carlton Street, Counselor Abdu. Document 33217, handicap parking 41 Urban Avenue, Hermen de la Vaguen.
Counselors, can I please get a motion to go past 10?
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Document 34417, handicap parking 18 Summit Avenue, James Orlando. Document 345, handicap parking 131 Garden Street, Emegila Jimenez, that's a, that was a hard one.
Emegilda.
Come on.
Emegilda.
Emegilda?
Emegilda.
Emegilda Jimenez, okay, I got it. Document 34617, handicap parking 1820 Phillips Street, Dora Avalo. Document 34817, handicap parking 37 Arrogant Avenue, Laura Roman, okay, and the council vice president, and the council president, sorry. Document 34917, handicap parking 66 Oxford Street to the Lee, Laura Roman. Those are in bulk, the handicap parking-
366, 366.
Oh, there's a 366, where is it?
That's a stop sign.
Yeah, but it's, it's to order public hearing, we have to order-
Okay, I was taking all the handicap parking.
354.
To order public hearing too.
Okay, if that's okay, then make sure that my motion is modified, because I said only public. So, document 36617, stop sign, request for Hermen Street and Ferry Street, Counselor Ortiz.
377.
And 377, another stop sign at East Platte Street and East Pleasant Street, Counselor Ortiz. Okay, that's the bulk.
There's a motion on the floor to take this as a block and order a public hearing, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion has been properly second, any discussion?
Any discussion?
Since there's no, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 308, Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, um, 308 is the Lawrence Historical Commission request to recognize the authority of the commission to name or remain sites within its jurisdiction. Donna Pertolino, Secretary, I guess, has requested this on behalf of the commission. So the ordinance committee met and, was it favorable?
Favorable. Favorable recommendation.
Yeah, it's favorable, has agreed to accept the proposal, um, and that's in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second, discussion, Counsel LaPlante.
You guys have it.
So, I just looked over this, it makes a lot of sense that there's duplication and what the Historic Commission is looking to do is to bring some clarity, do some research, and make sure that there's no conflicts at these, at various places, and they bring several examples before us, and that makes sense. What my can, what my question is, is it, I'll, I'll read the pertinent part and then ask the question. The Lawrence Historical Commission requests the authority to prepare and name sites in the city's historical districts, also to review and approve such proposed names in the historical districts. The Lawrence Housing Commission would be granted authority of this said process-
The Lawrence Historical Commission.
What'd I say?
Housing.
Sorry, sorry, Lawrence Historical Commission would be granted authority of this said process that would then be submitted to city council for final approval. So it says here that they're going to approve, and it says the city council is going to approve. What happens if the counselor from, from Mount Vernon decides he wants to go ahead and name a certain street intersection for some cause that he believes? Can he do it as a city counselor in the city council, or does he have to go before the Lawrence Historic Commission to get approval, and then being brought over here?
It is my understanding-
Counsel Maldonado.
It applies only to historical places.
It is my understanding that it goes to the committee, but it will have to come to the full council anyway, on, by the recommendation of the committee. If the council wa, is able to convince four other counselors to, not to agree with the commission and name it differently, then the, the council will have the final authority.
So my question remains, 'cause I'm not sure I'm clear. It sounds like we're abdicating a little bit of our response, or a little bit of the authority that we have to be able to do things unilaterally. It sounds as though, right now, we can do it. We did it several months ago. Frank Elecno, World War I guy, distinguished service cross, we were able to give him-
Bill Melendez.
We were able to do it, Isabel Melendez, a bunch of different, right? We were able to go ahead and do that and do it quickly. My concern is, I, I like that, I like the ability for us as a city council, because city councils in the past have been able to do all the various monuments, all the various things, I like for us to continue to do that. It's, my concern is that, is the Lawrence Historic Commission being a check on the city council, and I, that would be of some concern to me. I think that the Lawrence Historical Commission can do a lot more, I want to give it more authority and more ability to do things. I would like for them to do the research, I think that it's important that when there's these conflicts that they mentioned on here, that they go ahead and do the research, settle it, and then make whatever needs to be done to make the clarification. But if we're taking, what's unclear to me in reading this, and it's still unclear, because the language is ambiguous, is whether or not it's gonna take away from this council's ability to go ahead and do whatever we wanna do, whether it's a veteran or somebody of cultural interest, or whatever, whatever we decide is a decision that we wanna make for somebody, that's my concern.
Well, if I may, my understanding about the commissions is that they're concerned with what preserving historical integrity and historical areas. So, therefore, anything outside of that is not their purview.
So just so I'm clear, if you don't mind if I enter, may have a discussion.
And we could make it clearer.
Is, is it only in the places that have historical-
Yes.
Areas, for example, Prospect Hill-
Yes.
Has an historic area.
Yes.
Right around this, the, the, the Campioli Common area is an historic area.
Yes.
Only in those areas that are, that are designated as historic areas, that's where they have it.
Yes.
But what happens if a counselor wants to do something in a historic area? Do we, do we not have that ability, or do we, do we acquiesce at this point?
I'm, I'm saying that in the past, I will tell you that in the past, the people have had to go to, before the Historic Commission, to discuss with them, in, um, changes that they wanna make. And the average person, I'm not talking about counselors, I'm just talking about the average person now, who wants to make changes to their property are not allowed to do so.
Oh, I get that, I get that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm concerned about the naming of different places, that's my concern. The naming of different intersections, street corners, wherever they are in the city, I, what I don't wanna do, and it's unclear, and I'm not sure I wanna get an answer, because they're not here, and the language here is still ambiguous, and it's getting late, I don't think we wanna go into a markup session of this document. But my, my concern is that it's, it's unclear, and that would be my concern, and maybe this, maybe that's not, maybe we, something can be drafted in such a way where the council can go ahead on its own and do something, and the Historic Commission can do this, but just because the council takes action doesn't mean that the Lawrence Historic Commission presents a check and a balance on the council. That's my concern, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Well, I think we should, we should, um, table this item so that we can make it clearer, right? So that we can see it, what our authority is, and what their area would be, okay? We can do that, I think so. Counsel President, what do you think?
Me personally, my two cents in this conversation is that I have a similar sentiment to our counsel vice president. When, at, at first, it looks, um, it looks good that the Historic Commission will have the, the opportunity to name or rename certain areas. And when I was, I, I read the documentation, 'cause I was, um, the ordinance committee that night, but I had, they, they provided us documentation on that night, if Counsel Maldonado remembers, so I read through it, uh, the day after, I didn't have the opportunity to read it on the night off. Um, and after I read it, I came across those, you know, the, the same type of language, and the language to me wasn't clear, so I, I didn't feel comfortable. So, you know, I think it will either have to be modified, uh, in order for, for us to have a better understanding of what the end result would look like, um, because of the way that it's written today.
So before we table, shouldn't we send a letter-
I think that would be prudent.
To the city attorney requesting?
Counsel Maldonado has an idea?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem if we include in this language that the city council can originate.
Originate the idea.
It's, exactly, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, I think it would be good that we, if it is within the, uh, historical district, that we ask them to look at it.
Yeah, I think that's-
Not as say, because in the long run, we are the one that have the final approval.
Yeah.
Okay, and we are the one that's gonna make the decision. So I don't have a problem in changing the language so that it will say that, that the city council, uh, can originate, uh, changes of names, uh, in any part of the city, including the, including the, uh, historical districts.
Yeah, and I, and that's why, and I think we all agreed at, at the subcommittee level, based on the information that was provided to us, and, and we like the concept, I, I think that the idea behind it is not bad, similar to what Counsel Maldonado is saying, it's just the, the language of it. You just need to understand what, who or the final authority will be.
Of course.
Is it us, is it them? I think that's what the, the confusion is right now.
Because originally, they wanted the sole authority, and I said, no, uh, that we wanted final approval, no matter what. So, uh, we can change the language and say, uh, that we can originate, the same as the commission, any change of names, and, uh, and approve it.
Yeah, so, I don't know if that brings us any closer to where we want.
Yeah.
But Counsel LaPlante, you had an idea?
I think what I would, what I would do, I guess we're marking it up here, what I would do is I would add language that would say something to the following, the Lawrence City Council retains its authority to, to create, uh, and name any park, bridge, building, intersection, et cetera throughout the city.
Historical landmark.
Historical, thank you. In addition, should the Lawrence Historical Commission wish to do something within its boundaries, it certainly can initiate that process in its boundaries, and then, of course, it would come up to the full council for the, with the, um, all I'm doing is I'm not saying that if, that Frank Elecno op section, if I had that, who we're all familiar with, I had to send it to the Lawrence Historical Commission, and they, whatever they say, they didn't like it, whatever they didn't want it, and whatever they sat on it, do we, can we extract that, how do we do that, do we have that ability to do that? So, and it's unclear, so, and this, what I just said, in this case, we can just do as we will, but we also have the Historic Commission, if they wanna go ahead and start doing that stuff, they can, when it's stopping them, they can do whatever they wanna do there, and they can send it back up to us.
Yeah, they, they have felt underutilized.
Well, this would still allow them to do that, and the research and everything else, and certainly as a council, if we choose to use them as a resource arm, if that's within their purview. If there's, if there's confusion on a, I know, for example, there's, they mentioned all these different things, that's great that they've found that, and it's great that they're gonna fix that, I hope, and then we can get some clarification. Our city website, with these names and these markers, are atrocious. We've got people from Brookline who, uh, were, said they were part of the Korean War, and they're World War II veterans for one part. They're Stockton Park, they thought was a Vietnam veteran, it's where the, it's the five corners, it's actually the former treasurer of the, of the, um, of the Essex Company, had nothing at all to do with, with Vietnam. I mean, it just, the stuff is just, it's all over the place, as we're seeing things, Louis, I'm gonna go on, Louis Sandberg has been very good about finding and locating, and I've been doing it as well, as I'm going through my research of stuff, so anyway, that's where I'm coming from. So, uh, let me do this, I'll, I just made a, well, who made the motion? His motion was a-
I did.
Counsel Alvarez.
Would you accept that as a friendly, a friendly amendment, what I just said?
Yes.
Is this an ordinance?
I think it's going to appear in the ordinance book, no?
Is it a policy?
Yeah, so maybe it should go back to committee.
Because there's already a Lawrence, Lawrence Historical Commission in our books, so this would further-
It's gonna be drafted by the city council.
Was this submitted as an order?
So what was this submitted as?
It's a petition.
It was a petition at an ordinance.
It was a petition.
So it's not even an ordinance?
So now it has to go back?
It's got no teeth.
It hasn't, yeah.
It has to go back to ordinance?
I think it's more of an idea today.
Okay.
Okay, I don't even think we need to, it, this is not even an ordinance, can we, can we all agree this is not an ordinance?
So I think, I modify my, um, motion-
Not my motion, I-
To say, report, committee report.
So motion to approve it as a committee report.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
And second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, okay. What's the general consensus here now?
You wanna make the motion, you want me to?
Well, I think it should go back to ordinance, I guess, for language, to work on the language.
Okay.
Or we could leave it here and work on the language.
Okay, so I'll, I'd like to recommit document 30817 to the ordinance committee.
With the instructions from the full, or at least if you, if it's okay with you, I mean-
The instructions of the full council.
No, I think that's great.
To draft the appropriate language.
Then more teeth.
Yeah.
Okay.
But not as an ordinance, right, as a-
As a pol, uh-
Guidelines, policy?
It's a policy.
It's a policy, okay.
Okay?
Have we read, have we read your, it's like, the existing ordinance?
I have not.
It doesn't give them any.
I haven't, I have, personally, I haven't, I don't know.
We might want, uh, two, is that okay? Because they can send it to the ordinance committee.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, if you could find some language in there to send to the ordinance committee as part of the document, that would be helpful, if there's any.
Just to take a look at what is in here.
So next document is, uh, document 37417, Madam Vice Chair.
39417?
374.
374.
Oh, disclosure of municipal employee- Oh, disclosure of municipal employee of financial interest contract, Frank Martin, Fire Department Captain. And I was looking for something else, now I messed up. Do you remember what?
Yeah, so you came up with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, so, Council President, the ordinance committee met and decided favorably on the disclosure of municipal employee of financial interest contract of Frank Martin, Captain in the Fire Department.
Okay, councilors, is there any second? Any discussions in there? There's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 39417, Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I looked for that, and I couldn't find it within my paperwork. So again, I'm going to have to rely, that's my punishment for not being able to go. But I'm going to rely on people that were there. Oh, you found it. Thank you.
I'll take credit.
Okay, the full council met, and without a recommendation, moved this item forward, 39417. So I make this in the form of a report and in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made to approve as a committee report. It's been properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing there's none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
So what do they want from us?
We need to ordinance this position. So we need to order a public hearing for this.
We need to order a public hearing, but I would like to, I would like to make, to make a motion to make a couple of changes before we send it to a public hearing.
Okay. To the ordinance language? To the ordinance language? To the ordinance language, proposed language?
Yes. Yes, there are two changes that I would like to make on the language of the position. Number one, and I would like to make that as a motion. One change is that the position be approved by, I mean, be recommended by the mayor and approved by the city council. That's one change. And the second change is that the engineering requirement be changed to civil engineering. That the plain word engineering will lead to any type of engineering. And I'd rather that it be a civil engineer. So those are the two changes.
Huh? What page, what section?
Oh.
Why can't I find that?
On the requirements, let's see, minimum qualifications, okay. On the minimum qualifications, uh, let's see, where is it?
Education and experience.
In the back, education and experience. Bachelor's degree in construction management. Civil engineering, rather than engineering, or architecture preferred, civil engineering. So that language should be changed to add civil engineering. And before that, somehow in the.
Point of clarification, did you say and add civil engineering?
No, no.
Not civil engineering?
That the engineering be, the word civil engineer, civil be added to the engineering.
Not just engineering.
So instead of? In place of?
No, no. Add the word civil.
So I will read it.
Engineering word.
Let me read it as Councilor Maldonado suggests. So he will read as the following. Bachelor's degree in construction management, comma, civil engineering or architecture.
Exactly.
That's what he will read.
Okay, so that's one. And the other one was the, that the position, let me see. I don't know where we can add that. Where the position will be recommended by the mayor and approved by the city council.
Okay, where is it?
I would say that it will go under the position title.
Okay. Where's the title over there?
Right here, the back, the first page. That the wording under the position title, recommended by the mayor, position be recommended by the mayor and approved by the city council.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Those are the two changes.
And then we have to send it for a public hearing if it's going to be done in ordinance? Uh, Council President?
Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Thank you. I'd like to say that I support the idea of making sure that it's a civil engineer and the others, that he has the other degrees that are here. Because we always need the backup for like the Water Department, Public Works, the Department of Public Works, of the city engineer. We always need a load of civil engineers. So if we can have some people on other positions that are not as demanding, we could be sure that they gain some experience. And if we, you know, have a problem with any of the other departments, say someone left because they were going to make more money or something like that, you know, we'll have someone on the back burner. So I like the idea because of that.
Okay. Councilor Ortiz?
I didn't see here where the grade is. Can somebody point that out to me, or is it not graded yet?
What, the what?
The grade, has it been graded?
No. So remember, this is.
It has to be here too, right?
So isn't the grade supposed to be in the ordinance?
So, yes.
Yes, okay.
And it should be grade eight.
I know we were giving the amount.
Eight?
On the bottom of the, it should be.
Yeah, it does say.
It's the greatest.
Grade eight.
Okay, because I was looking, I was reading through the body, like, I'm like, I don't see the grade.
Grade, I think it's ninety, grade eight is about ninety to a hundred. I think it was, or a hundred and ten.
Eighty to ninety, eighty to ninety, eighty to ninety-five. Eighty to ninety-five.
That's a very.
I have a draft ordinance just sent to me about four thirty today by the city attorney, so I can send that to you tomorrow. With those details in the draft ordinance. What you're suggesting, Councilor Maldonado, will be placed if it's approved by the council tonight for publication.
So two things, remember that this is a job position.
Mr. Clerk, can you make sure I get a copy of that too?
Remember that this is a job description.
Creating a job position.
So the ordinance itself is relatively and slightly different than the job descriptions. So it is a shortened version. So are the changes that you're suggesting in the ordinance or in the? So it's part of the ordinance? Okay, so we're not going to see the changes here? So we will not see the changes here? We will see it in the ordinance?
In the draft ordinance.
Okay. Just, okay.
So everything he said plus?
In the ordinance, okay. So any further, did that make sense?
I'm making that as a motion there.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded, any further discussion?
Is this an already ordinance position or newly created?
New. Remember, this is part of the CIP that we have been discussing. We approved the funds within, for this particular. Capital Improvement Plan, yeah. So this is the same position that we have been discussing for a couple of months now.
So the DPW director, he has talked to us about what he needs, and that's one of the things that he needs?
Yes, so this is one of the things.
I would also caution or advise, suggest the council that when the ordinance is published, even in draft form, it is simply a notice. If there are changes to be made at the public hearing, it would suggest that you allow, don't be so critical of the ordinance as published, but read it, and if there are changes to be made, they can be made at the public hearing.
Right, so it is possible that way.
All right.
Mr. President, would the clerk please read the changes as it was offered, the motion to?
The two recommended changes by Councilor Maldonado are, one, that the position engrossed for a civil engineer.
Right.
And also that the position be a recommend, based on a recommendation by the mayor and approved by the city council.
And, and the position, oh, so this is going to be more like a department head where it's got to be approved by the council? Is that the recommendations on that?
At that grade, I would think so.
I don't know, that's worthy of a longer discussion.
I think so, because that amount of money is significant.
Why question whether or not we have other positions that are high paid that don't come before the city council for?
I don't know which of those.
Fire, they don't come before the council, civil service.
Capital Improvement is going to involve a lot of projects and a lot of money. And this council should be, should be involved in who is going to do the work.
Yeah, you guys should have that.
I'll need to think about that. Anyway, all right, so we're going to have a further discussion if the republicarian.
Yes.
So all those in favor, please say. It was seconded by Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Public hearing.
So I think that's it for this ordinance.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for your support.
No, thank you. Counselors, I would like to take the following documents as a block for purposes of withdrawal. Documents 32914, transfer vendor license. 36514, transfer vendor license. Document 37514, transfer vendor license. 515, transfer vendor license. 615 is a transfer vendor license. 14915, a transfer vendor license. 26115, a transfer vendor license. 26415, stop sign. 28515, Partham School traffic direct, direction. 32015, new voting machines. 33015, secondhand dealer license. 616, transfer vendor license. 5716, disclosure by municipal employee. 8616, change the zoning on property located at 5557 Garfield Street. Document 10616, national grid, requesting to place underground electric conduits. 22016, transfer vendor license. 33116, a petition to install transport equipment on proposed utility pole. 331A16, constructing a new utility pole. 331B16, transporting equipment to an existing utility pole. 331C16, petition to construct and install a new utility small cell equipment. 331D16, petition to construct and install a new utility pole. 331E16, petition to install wood utility pole and install a small cell equipment. 34516, petition to install new hood utility pole. 22917, dedication of Railroad and Havil Street intersection. Counselors, can I please get a motion to take it as a block and withdraw? Motion has been made and properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors, are there any table matters that you wish to take on the side of table at this point? Seeing there's none? No, new business. Document 39617, Office of Planning and Development. Grant going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 39717, Handicap Parking, Ordinance Committee. 39817, going to the Department of Public Works Recycling Dividends Programs Grant, Budget and Finance Committee. Document 39917, Lawrence Fire Department, petition to adopt General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26. It's going to the Ordinance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee?
Yeah, so if we can get a quorum, I'd like to see if we can schedule a meeting for Monday, the 11th, at 7:30.
Okay.
Does that work? I know it's unorthodox, but I'm trying to make sure we have a quorum.
Monday, the 11th, at 7:30 works for me.
Yeah.
Oh. Yes, he opened up right now.
We'll get it done, we only have one item. I can't promise that, but.
So available, we have a quorum?
It's a hair appointment, I'm told, but it's okay.
Oh!
His hair appointment?
His hair appointment!
Looks good on you.
It's Monday, is Monday a yes or a no?
I think it's a yes, 7:30 on Monday.
7:30?
One hour.
An hour?
He's got his appointment.
Vice Chair of Ordinance.
He's going to the same place his client goes to.
Vice Chair of Ordinance Committee. Nelka?
What was that?
Ordinance, okay. When is the meeting going to be?
Usually Thursday, right?
Thursday, the 14th?
Thursday, the 14th?
Okay.
I mean, there's no holiday, right?
No, that's not a holiday yet. We're working. The Historical Commission will name it a holiday.
You'll name it a holiday?
We all want to go. Counselors, given the fact that I will be sending out an email to all of you guys to extend an invitation to celebrate the, you know, the service provided by Councilor Ortiz, Councilor Maldonado, and Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez,
Oh, that's sweet.
who will no longer serve with us after the next meeting. At least for the following term. So I will be inviting you guys to a celebration, and hopefully you will attend. I do not have the date easily available with me. But I'll try to make it on a date that will not conflict with school or committee schedules with subcommittees, before the holidays also. So it will come relatively quick. So hopefully, you guys will be able to attend to celebrate their service in the city.
Will there be cake?
There's things that I will not want to disclose, whether or not there will be a cake. I'm sorry, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez, you asked something?
Yeah, I was just saying that I want to congratulate everybody on their reelection. I know it's hard work, people don't know unless they're doing it. So thank you so much for coming back, and if I can ever be of assistance.
Thank you.
Just give me a call. I may not be able to move fast, but I can certainly make a couple of calls.
Thank you, we appreciate it. So, Counselors, can I please get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn for what?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Wonderful. So a motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, have a wonderful night, everyone.
Discussion.